Hello, and welcome to the August meeting of the Carpentry and Planning Commission. I have a roll call.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Van Antwerp.
Here.
Commissioner LaFever.
Here.
Vice Chair Allen, or excuse me, Chair Allen. He is absent. He indicated he may not be able to make it tonight. Commissioner Bennifield also let us know she was out ill and would not be able to make it tonight, and so that leaves Vice Chair Moyer.
Here.
Thank you.
Well, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any introductions?
Sorry, Vice Chair, I was trying to bring speaker slips up to you, but yes, we do have one item under Presentations and Introductions, and that's a brief presentation from Bob McDonald with the Carpenter Valley Water District.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that now.
Perfect.
If you want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable, thank you, Honorable Commissioners, for hearing just a brief presentation on a project that Carpenter Valley Water District has been working on for some time, and I wanted to do sort of a high-level look at the project, given that this project will be coming to you in the future for consideration of a CUP/CDP permit. Are you in charge? Next slide, please. So, just a brief description of the Water District here in Carpenteria. You can see the map shows the city boundary, and the yellow is the Water District boundary. It includes portions of the county as well as the city. The district has three water supplies: local groundwater, Lake Kachuma, and state water project. And our mission is to provide a reliable, safe supply to the communities of Carpenteria. Next slide. So, you know, one of the, one of the questions I get very often is, why are we doing this project? And I think this fact here, that during extended dry conditions, Carpenteria faces a shortfall of 2,500 acre-feet per year. Just to give you an idea, our annual demand is 35, so that's a pretty big shortfall. And we actually saw this come, come true in, in fact, you know, in 2016. If we would have had one more dry winter, we would have essentially run out of water. So that was a wake-up call, and 2016, we started looking at this project, and of course, here we are, 10 years later, trying to get it off the ground. So, next slide. So kind of along that vein, why are we doing this project? So the project is designed to treat and purify wastewater to create a new sustainable water supply for Carpenteria Valley. As I said, the project was initiated in response to growing water scarcity concerns, which were very pointed in 2016. But the cap, you know, in the end, once we get it up and running, will reliably supply a baseline of water supply for Carpenteria of 1,000 acre-feet per year. Some of the benefits that the project will introduce are, you know, we import most of our water here in Carpenteria through a pipe, a single pipeline that runs along the base of the San Inez River, and we, during debris flows, were, were threatened with the debris flows that were knocking out pipelines and such. South Coast Conduit crossed several of those creeks where there were major debris flows, but fortunately, it stayed intact, but we don't think that's always going to be the case. And so, one of the risks that we take with having a single pipeline bring in most of our water is what happens if that pipeline breaks. CAP will provide a local supply, so we aren't reliant, reliant on imported water supplies. It'll, it'll significantly improve the water supply reliability. We've done a lot of studies and looked out 50 years to figure out, okay, what is this project really going to give us in light of what we know about the unreliability of our, our current water supplies? And we were able to show that we would have water in, you know, 50 years, in all years, during one with which there was a critical drought similar to the last one. And so that's a good, that's a good thing. I think it'll create a baseline supply that we can rely on year after year as compared to drought-impacted water supplies like Lake Kachuma and state water. The project also, incidentally, will support groundwater sustainability, which the Groundwater Sustainability Agency is, is, its main goal is to, you know, reach and maintain groundwater sustainability. So, that's a good side benefit, and it also will reduce wastewater discharges to the ocean. What I want to emphasize here is that CAP will benefit the communities of Carpenteria for the next 50 years. It's a 50-year project. It is initially going to take some large investment, but, you know, within, I'd say, 10 years, those investments will have come back down, and we'll have 50 years of benefit. Next slide. So this project is a joint project between the Water District and the Carpenteria Sanitary District. We're taking water that is typically, or has been historically discharged to the ocean, and we're treating it in an advanced water treatment plant, which will basically remove everything. It's essentially demineralized water. When we get through the plant, we'll add minerals back in, and then we'll pipe that water into the center of town, where it will be injected into injection wells, and up to, you know, between four and a year, four months and a year, we'll pull that water back out with our existing groundwater wells. Next slide. So now is the time to do this project. As I said, we've been planning it for 10 years. These projects take a long time, but the luxury or the benefit that came with that time was we were able to really tap into all the grant programs that we could. We currently are at $25 million in grants. We hope to get another $10 million, which will put us at 50% of the total cost of the project funded by grants. The rest of the project will be funded by a 1.7% low-interest loan from the state. And so, we feel pretty good about this. If we wait on the project, costs can continue to go up to do these types of projects. We saw a pretty big increase, you know, post-COVID, and so we don't want to let that to continue to increase. So, we're really, really hoping that we can get this project done in the next three years. Next slide. So this is just an overview of the project. The project has an advanced water purification facility, be located on the sanitary district site. And again, that's just the additional treatment for the, for the discharged water to get it up to basically a purified level. We then have a 10-inch purified water conveyance pipeline. It goes about a mile across town. It terminates on, on Linden across, on the other side of the freeway. Those, those, the pipeline will terminate at those groundwater injection wells, which will function to put the water into the groundwater basin. And then we have two groundwater monitoring well clusters that are also located in the area for regulatory purposes to monitor the water and how it moves. Next slide. So finally, just kind of an overview of construction timeline. This is what we're hoping for, to begin in Q1 of 2026 on the ADVPF, and then shortly after that, start on the conveyance pipelines, and then in Q3, middle of Q3 of '26, start on the injection wells and monitoring wells. The conveyance pipelines are a short, much shorter duration project than the advanced purification water facility. We can do them at, at the same time, so that's why they're sort of overlaid, as well as the injection wells and monitoring wells are about seven months. So with that, I think that's the end of my presentation, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
There's no action we have to take. Okay. See, I have now on the agenda, was this a good time to change the?
Vice Chair, why don't we go ahead and do general public comment first, and then we can talk about any changes to the agenda?
Now, this period is for anybody that wishes to address the commission on items that aren't, that aren't included on this, in this meeting. So, and I have one request from Alan Koche. Right. And then I'll open it up after that to anybody else that has something they want to present.
The green light, that works. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the time tonight. I'm going to be talking about a general public comment that is related to the city-proposed parking lot number four, that is going to be built as part of the phasing of the Surfliner Inn, and really going to talk to a little bit about some adverse environmental impacts. I think the schedule has probably the final EIR coming to the Planning Commission sometime late this year, probably. The, the actual next step is a draft environmental impact that will come out from Nick's, from Nick's staff, and there'll be a 45-day comment period on that. But I just wanted to start some discussions with you all, okay? These comments that I made, I also sent you an email directly on that. So I'm going to just read, read this quickly, read the statement. "The proposed Surfliner Inn project is currently going through the environmental impact phase, phase of the development review process. The scope of the project includes the construction of a new city parking lot, Lot Number Four, across the tracks in the beach neighborhood on a parcel of land that is next to the railroad tracks, that currently has a public open space trail from Linden to Holly." The phase of this project is referred to Phase, Phase One, okay? Since the planning of it is that before they begin construction of the hotel on Lot Number Three, they want to make sure that the downtown and beach parking is not impacted negatively. So you build a parking lot first, okay? So, a very sound kind of logical plan. One of the adverse impact notes that myself and my wife Carol sent in during the public comment period, the initial public comment period, was the location and shape of the proposed new city lot, Number Four. It's a long, narrow parcel that seems only to allow the current conceptual design that's on the plans from, from the applicant of a long rectangular-shaped parcel, a shared single aisle or, you know, interior roadway within a parking lot. So it's going to be like a street in and out. Also, that the parking lot will only have one entrance and exit, and a dead end at the other end towards the Holly side. And the entrance and exit of that will be on a major thoroughfare, Linden, on the smallest block in the downtown T-area between Dorans and the railroad tracks. Where am I, here? Okay. This past Saturday, took a walk down, down Linden, just to get a feel of during this high summer usage of, of parking in the downtown and beach area, just to see what's, what the impact is on parking lot Number Three. It was full, okay? And expected, because it was summertime, the beachgoers. We also have now the Linden Square impact is, is available to see. And, and, you know, comparing the design of that proposed lot with parking lot Number Three location indicates a number of potential issues which came up in our impact comments as part of the environmental review. There's only one entrance and exit versus two in the current parking lot. Enches and exits into the current parking lot are on Fifth, a side street. Does it impact entering or entering, entering or exiting onto Linden, a major thoroughfare? And the interior flow of traffic, if you, if you do recall or, or understand, is that when you come into parking lot Three, you're directed in a one-way fashion. You go one way, you could park diagonally, left or right. So this, you know, this Saturday, I had a chance to look at it, and I was, I just observed cars coming in, cars going out, looking for open spaces, packed. There was a couple of, of handicapped spaces open, but otherwise, it was filled, and cars would come in and out and, and, and exit. So, the current lot, Number Three, you have to say that the, the design is pretty good, okay? On a full day, it's handling, handling the capacity, it's not causing up any backup, which could be different with the current proposed site of Number Four. So, I mean, at this time, just try to share with the Planning Commission, because it is going to come before you at the end of the year, and just imagine on a busy summer day, with all the folks walking up and down Linden, all the folks standing outside the Spot Burger, waiting for their, for their order, and then, two, three times a day, the railroad crossing with Amtrak trains. So, the position that we're taking, and we'll, we'll see what the final report, because obviously there's ways to mitigate some of the things around parking lot Number Four. We'll see what, what the city staff comes up with, with the environmental impact consultants. So I just wanted to share those comments. I also provided the Planning Commissioners a copy of the actual comments that my wife and I sent in, to give you a little, little more background of that. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Now, well, as I said, we're going to change the agenda a little. The first item, the sanitary district item, that's, that, we don't have a quorum for that, so that'll have to be continued till September meeting. So, and then applicant for the two housing projects, he wants, would like to switch, he'd like to switch the, the four, three and four, so I don't see any problem with that. Is that all right? Okay, so we'll let him do that. So the next item up is the, got to staple these together. So this is... Yeah. That's all right. I, I'm sorry, I should have included anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission on any item that's not, not on the agenda. Oh, you can't hear me?
No, we missed all of the first stuff you were saying.
Oh. Well, I apologize. So, I'll start over. Wait, the agenda's been changed. Item number one is not going to take place. We don't have a quorum. So we'll go with the item number two. And before we do that, I, I need to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to address the commission on items not attended, not event, not on our agenda for tonight? And I have one more speaker slip for that. Linda Reimel? Thank you.
My name is Linda Reimel. I live on El Carol Lane off Cassius. Oh, you can't hear me? Okay. Is that better? No?
You need to have your mouth close to it.
Good, oh, good, real close to it?
Is the light on?
Yes.
Then you gotta just put your mouth closer.
Light on it?
Yeah.
All right. My name is Linda Reimel. I live on El Carol Lane off Cassius Pass Road, and yesterday I was reading the Coastal View, and I saw a little line after they talked about the housing that was going in on tee time and La Guanitas, a little tiny line about builder's remedy going on Ogen, 130 units. And I thought, well, that's kind of interesting. How are they going to fit that in? So I've been talking to a number of people over the last day and found that, that this proposal, which is proposed by the same fellow who's doing the building behind the Mission in Santa Barbara, overbuilding there as well, is proposing three levels of, of parking, and then initially I heard eight levels of housing, studio, one, two, and three bedrooms, and now I've heard it may be 18 stories, I heard from the city. And I'm just wondering when it's going to be opened up to the public, because if it weren't for that one sentence, I don't think anyone would be aware that this is even a project that's being considered. And it seems way overbuilt for that area. So that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. The important thing is a builder's remedy. It's a nightmare, so. I think we're all aware of it. And so, no more public comment? We'll go on to item number two, the Clintner Mixed Use Project, Hotel and Conversion Appeal. And do I have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Vice Chair Moyer, Commissioner LaFever, and Commissioner Van Antwerp. Thank you for having me here. It's my very first item on the Planning Commission tonight, so if I get nervous or make any mistakes, tell me later, okay? Okay, so tonight, what we can expect with the presentation is, I'm going to present the project. It's on appeal, so I'm going to go through the approved project, the proposed changes to the project, and then get to the appeals and staff's response to the appeals. And then, after that, we're going to allow the applicant, or the appellants to present their appeals, and then the applicant will be allowed to present their, their project, and then we would go to the PC after that. So, okay. So, on we go here. Thanks. Okay, so, the proposed development plan would allow changes to the approved project, approved by the City Council previously in 2004, and it would allow a change to the approved second-floor commercial area, 2,807 square feet, and be allowed, have that be allowed to be changed to a six-unit hotel use. The new hotel would be comprised of one, one-bedroom unit totaling 691 square feet, and five studio units totaling 2,116 square feet, and they're approximately 423 square feet each. Each hotel unit would have its own bathroom and kitchenette, and the hotel would be staffed by one on-call manager who would be living on-site. The hotel manager's apartment unit would be located immediately adjacent to the hotel rooms, and no additional on-site employee housing is proposed. The next figure, it was shown, the, the change to the project is, is shown right here, if I can find a mouse. There we go. So just where it's highlighted here, with the yellow, it shows the commercially-approved units that are under development right now. And I want to clarify, it's under development with the commercial shells that were previously approved. The hotel's not under construction as a part of what you see going on at the site right now. This shows where the change is going to happen in use. So it's going to be from this flexible commercial space to hotel uses. And then in this figure, Carpenteria Avenue is on your right. The proposed development plan, whoop, on we go, the proposed project description, the is a, the approved, excuse me, the approved development plan and coastal development permit for this project allows for construction of, let me step back just a second. What I'm speaking about is the project that was approved by the City Council previously. So what was approved was a development plan and coastal development permit for the Clintner Mixed Use Project that allowed for construction of a 24-unit, 31,026-square-foot Mixed Use Project that allowed for construction of a 24-unit, 31,026-square-foot apartment complex built around and atop a ground-level 22,198-square-foot concrete parking podium and a 4,044-square-foot, two-story commercial building fronting Carpinteria Avenue. And if you look at these pictures right here, you can see the commercial on the top fronting out onto Carpinteria Avenue. And then the photo at the bottom is fronting out onto the Ninth Street at the residential part of the project. The 24-unit apartment complex is comprised of four one-bedroom units, 16 two-bedroom units and four two-bedroom townhome units. The two-story commercial building along Carpinteria Avenue contains ground-level commercial space of 1,303 square feet and an upper-level space of 2,741 square feet. And it's, that has been designed to be divided into smaller individual leasable spaces to meet future tenant needs. The project was approved by the planning commission on February 5th, 2024. The project received city council approval at a five-to-zero vote March 26, 2024. Building permits were issued on December 12, 2024. And the project has been under construction on the parts of the project that are not under appeal, as I mentioned previously. The copy of the city council's action is attachment C to the staff report. So the applicant's request for project revisions a little before. To get to that point where revisions were requested, the applicant originally wanted to get, submit an application for accessory dwelling units. However, the commercial areas of a mixed-use building were not eligible for conversion to ADUs. So city staff did advise the applicant regarding alternative options that would be consistent with the applicable code, including seeking an amendment to the approved project to set aside additional dwelling units as low-income restricted units in exchange for qualifying for a larger density bonus units as low-income restricted units in exchange for qualifying for a larger density bonus under provisions of density bonus law. The applicant was reminded that the second-floor commercial areas were not limited only to office or retail uses, but that he was encouraged also to consider a full range of commercial uses permissible under the site CPD zoning and V overlay in the event there were other viable commercial use options that would meet his needs. The applicant opted instead to submit a development plan revision application in May 2025 to seek to convert the 2,807-square-feet second-floor commercial uses to hotel. To do this, the director need, this came in as a, a community development director approval application for the revision. And the revision is, the consideration that the director has when reviewing a development plan revision of this type is, and there's two things in this case. The first one is a condition of approval number 62 for the approved project. Condition 62 stipulates that minor changes to the approved project may be considered and approved by the community development director, but that any major changes require the filing of a revised development plan application to be considered, in this case by the city council. Project condition 62 does not provide any further guidance or threshold criteria for what constitutes a minor or major change or revision. However, the applicability section of the zoning code chapter for development plan stipulates that a development plan shall be required for all development on property in any zoning district which is subject to the provisions of this chapter, except that the planning director may waive the requirements of the section if the project involves only minor alterations, addition or replacement to existing structure and is in conformance with a previously approved development plan on file in the community development department. In determining whether a proposed project revision qualifies as a minor or major, the director relies upon this, these two considerations. After review, the director found that the proposed hotel use is an allowed use in both the CPD zone district and the visitor overlay district. The hotel use triggers a lower parking demand than other types of allowable commercial uses such as retail, office, restaurant. Proposed hotel use remained consistent and in substantial conformance with the previously approved development plan for the project. As the original approved development plan stipulated only that the area in question to be used for commercial use and acknowledged that it could be divided up into multiple smaller tenant spaces. Conversion only involved only minor interior alterations to the second-floor commercial space for partition walls and mechanical, electrical and plumbing changes. In other words, no changes to the approved residential units provided a number of parking spaces or experience, exterior appearance of the building. The requested revision was deemed to be minor in nature. The approved minor revision was subject to supplemental project conditions unique to the operation of a hotel use. And these include a 30-night stay maximum, hotel business license and transient occupancy tax payment. The community development director issued a notice of approval on June 6, 2025. Copies were sent to the applicant and surrounding neighbors. Ten-day appeal period commenced and ended on June 16, 2025. Three appeals were filed on June 16. A copy of the director approval letter and supplemental project conditions are in the staff report as attachment D. We're going to provide an overview of the three appeals received by the community development department on June 6. The first appeal was filed by Erin Bedoin. The second, and then sorry if I butchered your name. Appeal number two filed by Andrea Harrison and Robert Ruben Gonzalez. And appeal number three filed by Karen Aragaki. Then we will respond to the appeals and then provide a summary of the development plan revision consistency with the zoning and the general plan coastal land use plan. The Carpinteria Municipal Code provides the standards of review for both the planning commission and appellants. For the planning commission, the municipal code provides that consideration of an appeal of the community development director's decision by the planning commission shall be limited to considering the appeal and voting to approve, conditionally approve, or deny the appeal. For the appellants, the municipal code provides that the appellant shall state in writing the scope of the appeal and state officially wherein the decision of the community development director is not in accord with the purposes of the title or wherein it is claimed that there was an error of abuse or abuse of discretion. I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Title refers to the zoning code. Excuse me. And that's Carpinteria Municipal Code, Chapter 14, 70, section 76, 030. Thank you, Nick. And then, under that light, staff reviewed the questions and issues raised, and we provide our responses here. In general, the comments are as follows. The, the impacts from the proposed change of use would not be minor for the neighbors. Staff reviewed this issue, and you see that the proposed conversion would not result in increased impacts as compared to, to general commercial uses in, originally analyzed during the project approval. Since the change is a hotel use, it is, it is categorized under the zoning ordinance as a similar use to other commercial uses which are allowed in that zone. Since the project received extensive consideration during planning commission and city council approval, it appears that that hotel use is, is consistent with all other commercial uses that are envisioned for that site and that are allowed in the zoning ordinance. Comment number two, the, the approval should have, the project should have converted to additional residential units that would help, directly help meet the city's housing needs rather than providing additional visitor accommodation. As we discussed previously, the applicant was offered a possible permitting path to housing and opted not to pursue it. And the city cannot require that the applicant build housing. The next issue that was raised was the timing was an attempt to circumvent the public discourse on a major use change. As mentioned before, the project went through an extensive public hearing process and public input was factored into the project. Project conditions and the municipal code allow the applicant to request revisions. Number four, the issue raised is the conversion of use should not be allowed with having gone through a public hearing for a development plan with the city council. Also, as mentioned earlier, the project qualified as a minor revision, not subject to a hearing. And staff followed the standard noticing procedures for a change of this scope and size. Next issue is insufficient parking and competition for limited street parking. Hotels are, hotel use locally is required to provide five fewer parking spaces than other allowed commercial uses. But the applicant didn't apply to reduce the number of parking spaces that would be included. Instead, the number of parking spaces are going to remain the same. The next issue is an increase in traffic from hotel guests unfamiliar with the area pose a risk for accidents and disruptions. In the approved project, extensive street parking, pedestrian and bicycle improvements are being installed as a part of this project to ensure the improved circulation and safety in the project vicinity. Change in traffic patterns from general commercial to hotel is considered insignificant when looked at in light of the, the traffic study and analysis that went into the original project approval. The next issue was that mixed, that the hotel unit size and affordability was mischaracterized. Staff considers the California Coastal Commission guidance, which has previously found that overnight visitor lodging facilities such as vacation rentals can offer a more affordable alternative to visitors staying in a traditional hotel. Downtown, the downtown location may be less expensive than comparable lodging closer to the beach. The studio occupancy expected at one to two-guest unit or one-bedroom occupancy accommodates two to four guests. And we find that to be, because of that, it would be, tend to be more affordable than the other hotel and overnight stays. The next issue that we've addressed here is the loss of community-serving commercial space removing opportunities for local services. A variety of retail service or office uses are allowed in the CPD zone. The overlay district, the V overlay district is specifically intended for visitor uses such as retail, restaurant or hotel motel uses. So we find that to be consistent with the revision. The next issue is the lack of broader neighborhood awareness and notification. Staff followed Carpinteria Municipal Code requirements for providing a written copy of the approval decision letter to all property owners within 300 feet and occupants within 100 feet of the project's boundary. And then the next item is that the appearance that state density bonus law was used to allow visitor units to be added to the project after the fact. However, state density bonus law only applies to residential design and scale of residential units and their number. The commercial portions of the project did not directly benefit or make use of the state density bonus granted concessions or waivers. And, and to be clear, that would not change with this revision to the project. And the, the last issue that, that was raised was that the conversion of second-floor commercial area to hotel use should not have been allowed and characterizes the decision by the director to approve the revision as an abuse of discretion through arbitrary purposes. Carpinteria Municipal Code zoning chapter for development plans states that, and condition of approval number 62 for the approved project provide authority to the community development director for minor revisions in conformance with the approved development plan and city regulations. For consistency of the approved revision with the city's policies and regulations, we found that the proposed six hotel units are consistent with the use standards and land use policies and design regulations in the Carpinteria Municipal Code Title 14, zoning and the Carpinteria General Plan and Coastal Land Use Plan. The environmental review for this revision is consistent with the approved, the city-approved mixed-use project, which was previously found to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15, 332, the infill development projects exemption from the guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act. As detailed in the staff report, staff has found that that same exemption applies to this revision. And a copy of the notice of exemption is included as attachment E to the staff report. We are seeking the planning commission to consider these action options. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt resolution PC 2504 in attachment A to the staff report to deny the appeals and uphold the community development director's approval of project 23-2221, a DPR slash CDP to allow conversion of 2,807 square feet of second-store commercial area into a six-unit hotel use within... second store commercial area into a six-unit hotel use within a mixed-use building currently under construction as proposed in Exhibit 2 pursuant to the findings provided in Exhibit 1 in the staff report. Otherwise, number two, that you conditionally, conditionally approve any or all of the appeals and direct staff and/or the applicant to prepare revisions to the project and/or project conditions of approval and return to a future commission meeting. Or three, approve any or all of the appeals and overturn the director's decision, thereby conceptually denying the revision as proposed. Direct staff to return with findings for project revision denial to the planning commission's next meeting. Approval of any or all of the appeals and denial of the project revision would result in the construction and operation of the project in accordance with the original city council adopted conditions of approval for Project 23-221 DP, 2221 DP/CDP. And this is staff's recommendation, as we just read. At this time, we will make it available for the appellant's to, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your report.
If you have any questions about the project, excuse me.
All right. Does anybody have questions? So now, now we'll go to the appellate's presentations, so we go in order with number one.
Vice Chair Moyer, I think the, if the appellant's wish to speak, we'd certainly give them the opportunity to. Aaron Bodoen is the first appellant. I'm not sure if he's here. The second appellant was Andrea Harrison and Robert Ruben Gonzalez, if they'd like to make any kind of a presentation to you or add to their, to their letter that they previously submitted. And then, the third appellant is Karen Aragaki.
Okay.
Again, if, if any of them are here and want to make a presentation, they're welcome to, but they're certainly not required to.
All right. Are any of those people here? And you wish to make a presentation?
Um, no.
Okay, that's very good. Thanks.
On the item. So, Vice Chair, if none of the appellant's wish to speak, then next, I think we would ask the applicant or the applicant's representative if they'd like to make any comments to your commission.
All right. Would the applicant like to speak?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. To address some of the issues, we did submit this as an additional housing project, but we found that that wasn't consistent with the zoning of the project, and the path to get that was a litigious path, which I thought was going to be a litigious path. So I met with the City of Carpinteria and asked what they would like to see here and what we felt was going to be a good addition to the city, because it's important to me that the city does well, my project does well, and that Carpinteria does well. And we are a visitor-serving overlay on our commercial zoning, so that is a bar, that is a hotel, that is a restaurant, that is, we're just following the rules. And I have a feeling if I would have, no matter what I would have chosen, somebody's not going to like it. I can't please everybody here. But I am following the rules. These were the zoning that's been set forward. I wasn't even sure that it needed to go to, to, to the neighbors because we were following, because we were commercial use. Commercial use has a broad definition, and that definition is cafe, restaurant, hotel, office, retail, and especially serving the visitors. And I don't understand, in fact, one of the appellant's has an Airbnb in their house, so I'm not sure that that's not a conflict of interest. By telling me I can't follow the zoning rules, do what is correct, which is hopefully helpful to Carpinteria, that they don't like it because it's going to actually have more parking, have less traffic. If you look at office numbers in Carpinteria, they're about 50% vacancy right now. Retail's almost about the same. So we need something other than the Motel 6 or the Best Western. This is the, the exact thing that the zoning was meant for, which is why it's there and it's why staff approved it. I personally do not understand the issue. We have an onsite manager. We have, this project has acquiesced to the city in many ways. We're very happy to work with the city. We're very, I live in, I live in Carpinteria, I'm from Carpinteria. I, I just, I, I'm kind of perplexed why I'm here. So, that's all I have to say for right now.
Thank you very much. Now we'll open it up for the public. And my first slip is Gus Tollison. Is that correct? Did I?
No, actually, my name is Gina Tollison, but it might have been my writing.
Yeah.
That's okay. Can, can you hear me? The screen light's on.
Yes.
I'm Gina Tollison. I'm here on behalf of Justin Clintner and his proposed project. I've been a resident in Carpinteria since the early 90s, actually, on and off, and very aware of our community and the change in our community that's happened. I'm just here to say that I, I feel that his work would be of high quality for the community. It would be, if these were hotel rooms that were being offered, I know as a resident that I would feel very comfortable in recommending a visitor of my family or having that option in Carpinteria because it is limited. Many people that live here, we invite people in for family events, we invite people here for other public events, or just to share the beauty of our community, and there aren't a lot of options if we can't house them within our own housing. So I feel like it's a nice option in this conversion, and I just wanted to share that with everyone here, that I think it wouldn't be offensive and that it would be welcomed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next slip is Jason Menwiti. Sorry.
You didn't get that close.
What is it?
My name is Jason Mentheer.
Mentheer.
Yeah. I'm the owner of Carpinteria Valley Lumber, and I've been there for about 20 years, and I will have to say that Justin could have went anywhere and bought his material, anywhere, but he kept it local. He spent probably pretty close to a million dollars here in Carp, which is astonishing. I mean, if you look at Linden Square, that didn't present a dime to the city. They didn't buy anything here, didn't even offer to buy anything here. So I trust Justin to do the right thing. He's a good guy. He wants to spend his money here. It'll help bring more money to the city, and I'm all for it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Amerito Som. Is that correct?
Amerito Som, yes, almost.
All right.
I would like to request the planning commission, if you're allowed to make a decision tonight on this project, that you approve the appeal. First of all, the planner said this is where it's going to happen, as if you've already agreed, which I don't think you have. It was also stated by the developer that the staff approved the project. The staff doesn't approve projects, they're approved by the planning commission and the city council. And maybe that's part of the problem, not understanding what, how the planning process works here. Apparently, there's a fairly high vacancy rate at our local hotels. I don't think we need any more hotel rooms, there are plenty, very close to that property. A better option for this project might be having three additional apartments rather than six hotel rooms, which might not even give as much money as the rentals on those apartments. And if there's a problem with zoning regulations, maybe the developer can request an exemption. We need housing. All we hear about is the need for housing. Why not provide three more apartment units in Carpinteria for workers? And from what I understand, the Carpinteria Municipal Code requires one parking space per hotel room and one parking space per employee. So has that been calculated into the number of parking spaces that exist at the present time? And I think the constant new people moving in, nobody likes the Airbnbs. A hotel is pretty similar to an Airbnb, except you don't stay as long. So I would suggest that they consider another alternative, which might be additional housing, three apartment units. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one was Bob McDonald.
Vice Chair, I think that was for the
Public.
Introductions and presentations item.
Oh, okay. So that's all of the slips I have. Does anybody in the audience have a desire to address this? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation, and, go ahead.
I'll start, if you like.
Yeah, please.
Sure. Okay, very good. Thank you, staff, for the staff report. Appreciate that. Appreciate the, appreciate the comments from the applicant, and have reviewed all of the appeal information, documents that were provided, and I'm fairly familiar with the city's municipal code, and, you know, this project, well, let me just say that the, the project's current existing approval allows for commercial development. It's a visitor-serving overlay. Hotel use is one of the listed approved uses in visitor-serving commercial district. The, our municipal code, part of the planning process allows for contemplates that once projects go through the review process and receive a lot of input from the public and a lot of attention from staff, as well as the decision-making bodies, the planning commission and the city council, that there are often minor changes, revisions that may come along during the further development of the project that's anticipated in our municipal code. The director, community development director is empowered to review those, and for minor revisions or alterations, is empowered to make that decision, and that's what happened in this case. And I, so the, that component, in essence, has already been approved by, by the city through the community developments director's approval authority under the municipal code. And I, I, I support the municipal code in contemplating this need, and I support the decision that was made by our community development director to authorize the hotel use in the commercial visitor-serving overlay district, which, again, that was approved as part of the project approval originally. And I, I agree that these, this use is a, and the interior improvements that are needed to accommodate the use is indeed a minor alteration. It's consistent with the municipal code, the zoning. It's consistent with our, the community development plan, general plan, and, you know, I, I'll also point out, staff did a nice job providing additional information with regards to each of the issues raised by the appellant's, and I won't try to go into all of those, but I think in many ways, the, the impacts, the, from a hotel visitor-serving use, in terms of the amount of people that may be visiting the site, the number of parking spaces that's required, those kind of things, is certainly not more than other uses such as restaurant or bar, and in many cases, much less. And I think the parking was brought up here, there's, ample parking has been built into this project to accommodate these commercial uses, and the required parking for hotel use is less than what was provided for the potential uses in the commercial space. So there's a lot of other reasons that staff has outlined to support the director's decision on this. I support the director's decision that this is a minor alteration, and it would be, and I would, I would support denial of the appeals.
Thank you. Well, am I speaking loud enough? I do appreciate staff's time. I do appreciate the explanation of staff's decision regarding determination of this being a minor revision. However, upon reading the information provided, what I was looking for is information that's not in there. And had that information been in there, would have necessitated a further review, understanding that because the director decided this was a minor revision, no other review occurred in terms of the change of the scope. I did read Mr. Clintner's attorney's letter. I do understand that there is, and, and Mr. Clintner, in what you just said, understanding that this, thinking this is a minor revision and it's only affecting about 5% or so of the total square footage, if you really take a look at that, we're looking at the commercial space. And in my calculations, that's well over 60% of the project. So taking a look at, at how those calculations occur, it shows that that's actually a significant change in the use of that commercial space. So I think that it is a bigger deal than a minor revision. I do believe that much of what the appellant's have stated in their concerns are accurate. I think putting a hotel use into a building that is, that you're sharing with, with apartment, with, with residents, really changes the mix and the nature of the use of that land. So I, I have, I've read the appellant's concerns, and I come back to that startling fact that I don't believe this is a minor revision. I think it is major, and I believe it is warranted for continued review, either by the planning commission or city the Planning Commission or City Council. And certainly, I am suggesting that we look at a full development plan amendment. You've, you've, we've heard here that there, there is favor for additional residential units. And I understand that you mentioned, Mr. Clentner, that this would be difficult to do. And it presents a blocking point for you. But without having a full hearing or a full development plan review, I can't make that decision. I can't make that decision on a lot of those, those issues that come up. So, you know, there, there would be hotel operations involved. There's other cumulative aspects that I don't believe we have discussed, and we wouldn't unless we had further review of these issues. I think that the, the traffic and the parking analysis, it's my understanding, I could be wrong, but it's my understanding that that was done based on the original intentions of the project and the land use and not a hotel. So again, that's lack of information. It's difficult for me to, to make a decision on this. There could be additional density bonus benefits with additional, if you were to add additional apartments, there may or may not be, but I don't know that either. There's a lot of missing elements to this right now. I would need to see some sort of a specific operational details on how this is going to work. Are you going to have people showing up that have card keys? How do they access the rooms? Things like that. Those things really matter. So, and I, and I'm not really seeing a, a community benefit to this. But again, I haven't seen a community benefit analysis. So I'm inclined to uphold the appellant. That's where I, that's what I'm inclined to do right now. I think we're missing a lot of information, and I think it, it warrants further review. Thank you.
Thank you. My turn. I, I support the planning director's decision. I think that, and I think that the applicant investigated all of his options to, to deal with the situation. And everybody knows that office space is a dead deal here in Carp right now, and maybe for a long time. And I, I think, I think the applicant is, is a, a good element of our community, and I support him, his endeavor. And I think that I can, I can support this, and we can make a motion.
And so just for further clarification, again, it seems like we have consensus on the commission for denial of the appeals. But I do want, you know, I do acknowledge Commissioner Van Antwerp's opinions on the potential use. And I think the, again, for me, you know, the, it's a long process for development within the city. And we've been through the process, and this is one more step in the process. Community Development Director is following our municipal code and in managing this, and I support that as well. So I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 25-004, thereby denying the three appeals and upholding the Community Development Director's decision to approve Project 23-221, which allows a minor revision to a previously approved development plan, NCDP, to convert 2,800 square feet, second floor commercial area into a six-unit hotel use within the mixed-use building currently under construction at 4745 Carpinteria Avenue.
Second, you want a roll call?
Can I just say a couple of things very quickly?
Okay.
Are there grounds for conditioning this? If we were to put some of those safeguards in place that I outlined earlier? I'm thinking an operational plan. I'd, I'd like to understand the substantial revenue increase that the converge, that this would provide and how that would benefit the community. Maybe it could provide additional housing units, affordable housing units, a mix, a change of that mix. We can require Planning Commission review after a year to see how this is going. Again, it is a change of land use. I do not think it's a light, oh, we're not going to have retail shops or office space. We're going to have, we're going to operate a hotel. And I, I think that's a much bigger deal. And we have not had a chance to look, to see what operationally that's going to look like. So I'd like us to perhaps consider conditioning this.
Well, the mechanics of the project are really hard to condition. You know, you're asking for additional affordable units, but those come with parking restrictions that are going to throw us off, because then you're way over the parking requirement. I think that, in my opinion, I think this has been, this has been created in a way to do the least amount of harm and the most amount of benefit for the city of Carp. I mean, you get bed tax for six units that'll probably be occupied all the time. It's, you know, it's a, the applicant is going to hold these and, and, and be a part of this project for, for a long time. And the, to, so like, I don't feel a need to cripple him. I don't feel a need to cripple him financially because maybe I didn't like the project. You know, I, I feel like this project, it's a, a step for Carpinteria to, has shown that we're, we're not blind, just throwing a blind eye to what's going on with the county or with the city of Santa Barbara and how they're, you know, have to buckle up for their remit. And at least we're showing that with, with this project, which I think is a really outstanding project, we're showing that we are responsible. You know, we're not saying no more nowhere, you know? I, I think that it's, it's a great project, and I don't want to condition it. I, I think that the job's been done, and I, I support the, the director's decision. And I'm not, not in a position to change my mind, so.
I, I don't want to cripple the developer either. I just want further review.
Thank you.
And, and I'll just comment that, appreciate your, your thoughts, obviously deeply felt. I simply don't agree and that this isn't just a minor revision and has been adequately dealt with by our staff, Community Development Director. So there's a motion, so like, you ask a question, yes, we could condition. We, we could accept the appeals and add conditions or, you know, so there are things that we could do, as you know. And I think the, my motion stands. I'm not willing to amend my motion. So my motion is to uphold the Community Development Director's decision. And I'd like us to move forward with a vote on that motion.
I'm, I'm in the same, I'm in the same frame of mind, and there was a motion, and there was a second, and can we have a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner LaFever's.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Antwerp?
No.
And Vice Chair Moyer?
Yes.
Motion carries two one.
Well, we'll be taking a little break, about three minutes, while everybody clears out, and then, and then we'll go on to the next item. Welcome back. So now, we're going to change, do a change up here. We're going to hear item number four first. Caller, New Residents 4935 Dorance Way. We have a staff report.
We do. Good evening, Planning Chair Moyer and, or Vice Chair Moyer and members of the Planning Commission. Yes, we've got two of them. They're across the street from each other, basically, tonight, but we're going to do the one on the north side of Dorance first. So this is 4934 Dorance Way. The project description is for a development plan and a coastal development permit to demolish an existing 1,275 square foot residence and detached accessory structures. Construct a new 3,749 square foot two-story, single-family residence with the residential portion at 3,312 square feet, that's the living area, and attached two-car garage with 437 square feet. The maximum height would be 24 feet and 11 inches. The project would include new landscaping and hardscape, a new driveway off of Dorance Way, and the project would need modification to the front yard setback to be approved as presented. And here's an aerial vicinity map. So here's Linden here, Dorance. We've got the spot right here in the big spot parking lot. And this parcel is immediately west of the spot parking lot. So it's that first property going down north on the right-hand side, if you were going towards the marsh. And here's a picture of the existing residence here. There's a lot of hedges and whatnot by the street. So this is like from the street, kind of the best view you can get of it, not, you can't really get a straight-on view. And then this is one of the, there's like another structure back here, and then a little like shed garage thing here. So these are the detached accessory structures that are going to be demolished. And here's the site plan. So I mentioned that it's going to need a front yard setback modification. So the house, this is, Dorance is over here. Here's the new driveway. The proposed footprint for the house is here. And then the front yard setback has the two parts, right? It's the 20 feet from the property line and 50 feet from the center line, whichever's more. So in this case, it's the 50 feet from center line is more. So this dash line is showing the 20 feet from the property line, which everything is behind that 20 feet. And then the solid line is showing the 30 feet from center line. So there's the small portion of habitable area, which is like the entry foyer, and then upstairs, a small part of a bedroom, which you'll see in a minute. And then the cover, unenclosed covered front porch right here. These are the columns of the porch. So that's, that's what's in the front yard setback and the subject of the modification request tonight. So here's the floor plans. The first floor is over here. The orange area here is the floor area that would be in the setback. And then the yellow is the unenclosed, unenclosed front porch here. And then you see the garage front loading from the street and the living area and one bedroom downstairs. And then upstairs, there are four additional bedrooms. And then this orange section here is showing that part of the upstairs bedroom that's also in the front yard setback. also in the front yard setback. And here's the elevation. This is what you, the south elevation, what you would see from Dorance. Again, here's that little detail that pops out. And here's those columns that I pointed out earlier for the front porch, the stone columns. Wooden garage barn-style garage doors. On the west elevation, this would be the side facing the marsh direction. And the east elevation, this would be the side facing the spots parking lot. Notice the high windows here, with the 60-inch plate, or sill heights. So that's, you know, just right about, you know, up high for privacy, two-way privacy. People looking out, plus people looking in. And then here's the north elevation. This would be the elevation viewing the train tracks, a big covered porch across the back, and then some larger windows, because privacy is not as much of a concern, looking that direction at the mountains. And here's a cross-section. You can see, the project is proposing to use a slab-on-grade. So it's not a raised foundation like a lot of the homes, new homes lately in the beach neighborhood. And then you can see the way the roofline's been designed to keep the height at a minimum. And then the first floor plate height is nine feet. And then the second floor is nine and a half feet in some locations, and then eight feet right here. And then the roofline's been designed to minimize the height. And here's the east-west section, again, showing just the slab-on-grade foundation, and then the plate heights. And here's the roof plan. It's just basically hips through the couple of open gables, three, four open gables, actually. And the landscaping plan. The project was very well received by the ARB on May 1st, I believe, is when it went. And it's, the minutes are in your staff report. One comment that they did have on this project, because there's three houses by the same owner being proposed in the beach neighborhood right now, and they all had very similar landscaping, well, actually, they all had the same landscaping plant palette. So the ARB comment was to, you know, mix up the plant palette with the different grasses and shrubs for each project. So each one kind of has its own little identity. It has not been done yet, but prior to final ARB, the architect will work with the landscaper architect and come up with an individual palette for each of the three proposed homes. And this lot, because it is a little larger, does have two areas with artificial turf, a nice big area in the backyard, and then a little spot in the front yard. And then there is a little fence along the street here with more landscaping in front to soften the look. And this is DG here, which is, a car could park here, so additional street parking as well. Public street parking. And here's the story poles. The story poles originally went up for a similar design in February of 2024. They have since been removed, because they were just getting old and people were starting complaining. So in June, they came down. But here's the photographs of the story poles. So looking north from Dorance here, and then, again, looking north from Dorance, the other direction. This is over closer to Linden, and the little arrows showing where the story poles are. Story poles here, this is like, more like in the spot parking lot, looking back at the site here. And then here's from over in the parking lot for the train, looking across the tracks and the, at the poles. And then here, the Linden and the train tracks, looking southwest at the site. And then here, just a little more detail on that setback modification, because the project pretty much complies with all the other zoning requirements. The, well, it does comply with all the other zoning requirements other than the setback modification. So here's, again, that dash line demarking the 20 feet from property line, the area where the covered porch is, and then the 50 feet from center line, which in this case is the more restrictive part of the front yard setback. And then the solid yellow is that habitable space that's in there. And to approve a modification, the commission needs to make the finding that the project will result in at least one of the following public benefits. Either energy-efficient heating and cooling, the provision of affordable housing units through a mix of housing types with innovative design and construction techniques or other means, or provision of a larger amount of open space or landscaping than the minimum requirements of the district. And in this case, you know, our, our new building code with all the new Title 24 requirements, energy efficiency is kind of built into every project now. So that finding's kind of a moot point. But what is potentially a finding that you could make tonight for the modification is the last one, number three, for the open space, because the proposal includes 34% of the lot area as open space and landscaping, which is more than the required 20%. And then key objectives and policies to keep in mind tonight. Objective LU3 is preserving the small beach town character of the built environment of carpentry, encouraging compatible revitalization and avoiding sprawl development at the city's edge. Objective CD1, the size, scale, and form of buildings on a parcel should be compatible with the adjacent nearby properties and with the dominant neighborhood or district development pattern. And then Objective CD2, architectural designs based on historic regional building types should be encouraged to preserve and enhance the unique character of the city. And then in the staff report, there's, you know, a pretty significant discussion about the project and how it meets these requirements, specifically in relation to some of the newer residences in the beach neighborhood. So our action options for you tonight. Number one is the staff recommendation, and that would be to adopt Resolution PC 25006 and approving the project as presented. And adopting the sequent notice of exemption.
Thank you.
Uh huh. That concludes my presentation.
Does the commission have questions? Go ahead.
Cindy, at least one question to get started, get us started here. And I think this is on page 13 of the staff report. Has to do with Design Guideline 4, for the, the beach neighborhood design guidelines, which I know are guidelines, but nonetheless. So Design Guideline 4 talks about second-story coverage. The intent of these design guidelines is to, you know, minimize boxiness, provide for adequate step backs on second stories. And the guideline maximum is 40%. This project exceeds that, I believe. So my question is, is that an issue that was contemplated by staff?
Through the Vice Chair Moyer, Commissioner LaFever. Yes, it was complimented, contemplated by staff. And in the staff report, it does note that, you know, physically, the actual square footage of the second story comprises 40%, 46% of the total square footage, which is 6% above the 40% guideline, guideline. And if you look here on the floor plan, you'll see that the project has been designed to have the wedding cake and the articulation, the pop-in and pop-outs, if you will, around the perimeter to break up that second story from the base, the ground floor, to, to not have it appear as a box. And then additionally, on top of that, let me go to a side elevation. Well, I'll show you here. There's the covered front porch here, and then there's the big covered front porch or covered loggia on the plans all the way across the back. So visually, when you're looking at the mass, even though it's not official square footage, you see this porch comes out here, and it adds, you know, some weight to the lower portion of the house. And you see the front porch come out here, and visually, it adds some weight. And let me go to the east elevation to, to show that. You can see the, the weight of the covered front porch here, and the weight of the covered porch here. So where the intention of that Design Guideline 4, staff feels that the project is, complies with the intention of the guideline, which is to not have a, a box, but to have, you know, something small or something larger below it.
Okay. And I'll provide additional comments on that later, but I guess I, perhaps during the applicant's presentation, I may have a question for the applicant on that item. And then, I guess, just, I'm curious about the RENA analysis, where we talk about this providing one additional housing dwelling unit under our RENA. And it seems like we're removing one and adding one, so it would, it would be a wash. Is that correct or not?
No, again, through the chair. It's interesting how the RENA numbers work. It, it will count as one new house, one new unit, residential unit for our 901, for our RENA calculations. The house that gets demolished, it's not a minus one. It just gets noted as a demolished unit. So, and it gets acknowledged in the table that we prepare for the housing element update, or annual report. So it's, even though it is a plus one, minus one, you know, really, because you're demolishing a house and building a new one, for our RENA calculations, it's a plus one.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you, Cindy. I have a couple of questions. The first one is a question about the consistency and the type and intensity of the development itself. Can you give me a feel for what similar-sized projects have been approved in the beach neighborhood recently? And how this 3,749 square foot total compares to the existing neighborhood pattern?
I can. I, my aerial doesn't quite stretch as far as I would have liked it to, to answer this question. But right now, in the beach neighborhood, just down the street, and then, I believe it's just in the next block, is the Howard Residence, which is plus or minus 3,000 square feet. It's a good-sized two-story house with a detached garage in the back or the workshop above. And then further down in the beach neighborhood, on Fourth Street, at the end of Fourth Street, there's the Cerny Residence, which is also under construction right now. And that one, I believe, is 2,700 square feet. Again, it's another two-story residence. And then it also has a detached, I believe it's around a 500-square-foot detached garage also. Then, in the beach neighborhood itself, recent development, down at the end of Dorance, right? Those three? One, two, three? Yeah.
Ten years ago now.
Well, 10 years ago now, but, yeah, recent times of new development in the beach neighborhood. At Dorance and Ash.
Holly.
Holly, that's right, because Ash is the marsh. Dorance and Holly, there's three new ones. And then also across the street from that, there's another newer one that's on a double lot, which is a very large home. I don't know the square footage, but very large. And then on the corner of Ash and, or excuse me, Holly and Third, is that one that sits diagonal, is another very large house. So there's, there's a precedent in the beach neighborhood for large homes, newer large homes.
But specific to that particular area? Just within that one block or so?
Like, in this little circle right here? Well, you have the existing Stein House, that's a two-story.
Yeah, that's, that's a historical. It's been there for quite some time.
But for size, bulk, and scale comparison. Down here on the corner, you've got the, I can't remember the last name right now, but this one is a, is a two-story house here on the corner of Third and Linden as well. There's a proposal for a new two-story home here, and the lot between these two. Down here, there's some more two-story homes. This is a two-story apartment building. Over here, these are, both of these are two stories. Or three, yeah, the one is actually three stories. This is a two-story. This is a two-story. This is a partial two-story. It's just, one side of the house is a two-story. Oh, and then here on the corner of Linden, there's the, the five-plex with the four vacation rentals below, and the, the large one across the top. That's two stories also.
Well, I bring this up because I, I do think that it, it's very large for that particular area. I was there myself. And I did see the other buildings, you know, the apartment building, well, that's multi, you know, that's a residential, multiple units in there. But I did see a lot of smaller homes. And, you know, taking a look at those smaller homes within the one-to-two-block radius, it's an extinguishing breed. So that's why I wanted to, to find out a little bit more about what kind of analysis you've done, to take a look at how the, the mass of this conforms with what's there. And of course, additionally, to our design guidelines and for, for that particular beach neighborhood, as well as, you know, keeping in step with the small, city, small neighborhood charm. Question about sea level rise. Has the applicant, will they be doing any, anything to address the, the sea level rise impacts by 2100?
At this time, they're proposing slab-on-grade. So other homes in the beach neighborhood, well, let me, let me back up for a minute. So where this property is located, it is not in the area that's covered by our interim sea level rise guidance. So they are not required to do anything for potential sea level rise. They are proposing slab-on grades. Earlier renditions of the proposals on this project and the one across the street included filling the pad up a couple of feet and, and doing a raised pad, which is now not looked upon as the best method for elevating your home for sea level rise. The preferred method is to have a raised floor foundation and let the water run under the house and subside. However, when you raise your finished floor, you also raise your house and make it taller. So, you know, in, in interest of keeping the height down, not, and not in the area that's required to do the sea level rise modifications, they just went, decided to go with the slab-on-grade without filling, doing a fill pad.
When will the new changes go into effect?
Do you want to answer that about the firm map?
Through the chair. So for the sea level rise requirements, this is something that we're, we're currently working on. The first step is to get the general plan update completed, because that sets sort of the, the policy framework for the city to then go and amend its zoning code to require development standards for sea level rise. So, you know, right now, we're anticipating that perhaps the general plan could be updated by the end of '26, and then the zoning code update would follow sometime on the heels thereof. So realistically, we're still a couple of years out from, you know, having regulatory tools in place to require sea level rise to be addressed across, you know, the entire coastal area. In the meantime, as Cindy hinted at, we have what we refer to as interim sea level rise guidance, which we worked with the Coastal Commission to put in place. And because it's sort of a, an interim measure, it really is only focused on the properties that are most immediately susceptible to properties that are most immediately susceptible to, you know, any sea level rise, right? So it's those properties that are fronting along the beach currently that already, you know, are susceptible to flooding and would become more so with even one foot of sea level rise. And then, um, it also applies to some of the properties that come in close proximity to the salt marsh, again, that are kind of in the most immediate danger of any, of any sea level rise impacts. As we get farther away from the coast and farther away from the salt marsh, where there's, um, you know, kind of less immediate risk, that's the area that for now, we haven't tried to require those folks to address sea level rise, but it could come into play once the official policies and development standards are adopted through our, our general plan update and zoning code update process.
Which could be in about two years.
Two to three years is what I'm estimating. So again, we, you know, we've, we've encouraged and mentioned to the applicant that it may be in their interest to, you know, to plan for flood hazards or sea level rise, but we're not in a position where we can require it of them currently.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because, um, there is, it'll be costly. Are they, are they, will they be considered in that zone when the new report comes out in two years?
So, uh, this depends a little bit on, on what happens with the science and how it changes or evolves. Currently, they're in an area that would become vulnerable with five feet or more of sea level rise, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned about, um, additionally what, how that translates into cost, uh, if something were to happen. And if we do know now that they're in that zone or will be in that zone, and it's just a, a question of, um, updating the information and getting the building code changed and the regulations in two years, that seems like an awfully short time period. So that's why I'm bringing it up. Yeah. Um, I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any questions. I, uh, so who will open it up for the applicant? If he wants to present?
That would be lovely. Can we start with the setback, uh, exhibit? It's at the end. It's, should be the last slide.
Oh, I was going to do the mouse.
Oh, that's fine, too. Unless I don't mess it up. Uh, good evening, I'm Dylan Chappell, the architect, um, and George Miners is also here. And hopefully... I appreciate your guys' questions and hopefully my presentation is less on the architecture of the building, but if you have any questions on that, that's fine also. I'm, I'm kind of, my presentation is going to address the setback issue, um, and then also just trying to talk a little bit about size, bulk and scale, um, because I know, to your point, y-you know, we're seeing smaller houses disappear and bigger houses take their place.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Um, so let me start. Oh, my! Hold on a sec. Ooh, that's it right there. Do I do this?
You should go over here, see the zoom back and forth bar, and then that one next to it, that looks like a, no, no, no. Right there.
Can we zoom in on this a little bit? Or that's...
There's an electronic glass on the bottom.
Yeah, feel it, let's see.
Oh, I don't, oh, that's over there.
Let's see, so go about to the...
Are, are you guys, I don't have a license to fly this thing.
They're really big. I guess...
Oh, look at that, it showed up. Perfect. Oh, look, that's perfect. Thank you, Nick. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the setbacks. Um, the setbacks always come up on this street and we had a pretty long conversation about the setbacks, not in our last meeting, but in the first meeting that we went to. And so this is Dorance or part of, part of Dorance. part of the, part of the charm, I would say, of KARP is that this street was not developed all at one time by one developer. And there is a lot of, uh, diversity, um, amongst the buildings. There's, there's little tiny beach cottages. Some of them were army barracks that were moved here, you know, before I was born, that long ago. Um, there's condos, there's apartment buildings, there's some three-story houses, there's, um, there's a whole plethora of different things. But, so Dorance got built over time, but in, I believe it was 1981, the setbacks were all changed to 50 feet from the center line of the street or 20 feet from the property line. And I have some assumptions about that. I'm sure staff knows the answers, but I don't know if the 50 feet from center line was assuming a 60-foot right-of-way or, or what they were assuming. But what happened in 1981 when they changed that rule is that hundreds of properties, if not whole, actual whole streets, all became existing non-conforming because the setbacks didn't, did not comply, um, with that, with that. Um, maybe for a large portion of the streets, but any street essentially with less than a 60-foot right-of-way. Um, so like all of Carpentryah Park, some of the streets in there have a 60-foot, some don't, that's not this neighborhood. But, so for this neighborhood, a lot of these houses never complied with the 20-foot setback. And then in 1981, they said, "Well, we're going to push it 10 feet further back." And so you will see on this street, um, a lot of times when new projects come in, they come in for this variance. And it's not because we're proposing such a large house that we can't fit it on the lot. Um, but it gets to trying to, um, fit in with the neighborhood and be consistent. When we build new developments, when we can design our own setbacks, typically we try to line the houses up. And that gives everybody a consistent front yard, that's typically more public, and then it also gives everybody a consistent backyard. Um, and it doesn't put neighbors' houses in your backyard. So this street, that red dashed line, that's the 30-foot from the center, uh, sorry, 50 feet from the center line. This street has a very small, I believe it's a 40-foot, um, public right-of-way. So, um, that creates a 30-foot setback. Our parcel's not highlighted on here. And, um, but if you start on the right, you have the spot, it's got a two-inch setback. Um, then the next number is seven foot four. That's the building right to the left of our, of our project. Um, and then you have that apartment building, um, that's got, that's right around 20 feet. Um, and if you were to go all the way down the street, I don't know if you're going to find a house that complies with the 30 feet. Directly across the street, starting at the corner, you've got 14-9, 20 feet, 20 feet, and then six foot seven. Also, if the house is on a corner, it could be a street side yard on Dorance, which has less of, it, so the 50-foot to center line, um, is not required there. But that's just a little bit of the history and why we feel it's appropriate to, to try, we're not trying to line up with the house next door that's seven feet, but to push our house 23 feet back, what it does is it pushes our house into their backyard. And we want them to have a backyard. That backyard view is actually amazing. The mountain view is great. So that's the, that's the thought and, and why we encroach into the setback a little So I have a quick little presentation on some of the size, bulk and scale in the beach neighborhood. Some of these buildings, I'll start at the beach here. We're not proposing a three-story apartment building. I know some of them don't all apply, but it's just, this is, this is what's in the neighborhood. So obviously you guys know this. Bam, we have the beach here, Carpentryah Shores, that's a... Let me see if I can find out where I'm at. Um, okay. This is the overview of the houses that I studied, um, the, or the parcels that I studied. I started at the beach, worked my way up. Not all of them are apples to apples, but then I do highlight, I think, um, to your question, like what about the houses right in our area? How do we, how do we compete? So, you know, this is a 30-plus unit, three-story, uh, kind of boxy thing. This is Sunset, Sun, uh, Sunset Shores right across the street, also an extremely large development. As we work our way up the street, I think this is an apartment. I don't think these are condos, but I...
Condos.
They're condos, too? Okay. Condos. This is Del Playa. I believe this is five units. Um, and then this, this property is interesting because if you were to tell me, what is quintessential carpentryah? I don't know what's better than this building right here. Um, it's charming, it is a two-story, um, but it's, but it's low, um, and it's just a great example, I think of, I don't know, when, when you think of what's that carpentryah charming cottage, it's this one. There is a structure in the back, which I did take into consideration. So I did superimpose the, the ground floor footprint of our building on the left, um, the best that I could to this building. And this building with the garage, I included the garage, but we're including the garage in, in our footprint as well. This building is actually 1.4 times the size of our footprint. And it's also a two-story, it, it, I don't know if the garage is two-story, I'm not sure.
It, it isn't?
No, okay. Nick, how do I zoom out to zoom? No way. Okay. Um, that's that building. And then, you know, this building is kitty corner, I don't know how you say that, obviously. I would say this is in a million-square-foot building. There's the diagram of ours to theirs. It's only like 120,000 square feet or something, it says right there, I can't see it. Um, ours doesn't really compare to this, but it's directly across from the railroad tracks. Um, and then I will get into this next. Uh, directly across from us, our direct neighbor to the north, is the proposal of the new Surfliner Hotel. Um, and we're not a hotel, but this is just the neighborhood that we're in and what's going on around us. Now, there is, to be totally honest, there is a, what is it, a 94-car parking lot that's actually proposed directly adjacent to our property. And then the hotel. Um, but the hotel, you know, I, I don't know what people think about the hotel, but I think it could be nice. It's in, it's in a good area. The hotel is three stories, um, quite a bit bigger, uh, you know, I don't know if it's 30-plus units. And then as far as the height, we always get in this little thing of like, you know, do we do sea level rise? Do we push it up? Our building is just under 25 feet, but every time we come in with a 25-foot building, people are like, "Get this out of town, it's too big." Next to the hotel, it's going to look nice though, because the hotel is like, I don't know if it's like 37 feet tall. You could actually, on the third floor of the hotel, there is, I believe there's going to be a bar, there's going to be a reception area. And if you were to take a drink and jump into the swimming pool and swim to the bottom of their pool, you'd be about at the top of our house. Sorry. And then here is the latest size, bulk and scale of like the exact buildings right around us. And it starts with the spot, which is a pretty small building, that's smaller than us. The building that we're talking about right now is just to the left of the spot, it's the blue building. The next project is the blue building directly across the street. I don't have a different presentation for you guys, this one is pretty much for both of them. Um, directly to the left of us is one of those kind of smaller 1,600-square-foot, uh, single-story cottages you can see in the green. Um, excuse me, one second. Sorry, you guys. Oh, no. Shoot. Oh, no, Nick, where's my... That little charming thing, now we're a two-story. This, this doesn't, this is just the ground floor footprint is what this is showing. So obviously we're, we're bigger than that. But their footprint is like, I don't know if it's 85, it says on there, I can't see it, I'm sorry, it's like 85%. Then to the left of that, we have the apartment, which is obviously quite a bit larger. Um, and then directly across the street, you have two, two stories, um, on the bottom left there, that are also larger than ours in terms of their footprint. Um, and then directly south, you can see the buildings in green have smaller footprints. So that one is slightly smaller. Then it's the blue building, which is our other presentation, and then it's the Stein Building, which is on the corner that everybody knows, and that one is also slightly larger. So where we fall, if you were to just compare our house to like the smallest little houses, we are bigger than those, you know, that's totally true. But if you look at the exact area that we're going into, we do tend to kind of fall right in the middle. And then if you were to compare it to that charming house on the corner that everybody loves, our overall mass is going to be bigger because it's got a little bit taller, but just the, the footprint, we're right in there with that. So that's, kind of concludes my presentation. If you guys got questions or anything, we're here to help out.
You had questions for him, Clint?
Um, yeah, thanks for the presentation. Um, so, um, I mean, I like the project. Um, it's a, um, you know, the, this particular lot is, is larger than many lots in that neighborhood, so, um, the, but it is a lot of square footage, and I know you're showing us footprints here, which is fine. But my question really is about the second story square footage. I think, so, um, have you considered bringing that further, stepping it back further at a minimum so that it would comply technically with the design guidelines for the area?
Um, I, so I think, you know, we tried to, to address and, and we could study anything. One thing I, I would tell you is, we did come back with some heavy articulation and when Cindy shows the second floor, you can see the roofs all around it. It, you know, so one thing is we need to comply. That is a guideline, so it's not, it's not a hard line. But one thing I could tell you is, um, so this property has a 50% max lot coverage. We're at 36%. This property could sustain a duplex and two additional ADUs. So if you just want me to comply, I could shrink the second floor and like remove a bedroom, and then, but you have to tell the family member that's not invited. Or, we could just, we're well within the boundaries, just to make the ground floor larger, if, if the goal is just to get that number to comply. But, you know, our goal is, you know, to, to do a house that we think will fit in. So, we could, we could do it either way.
Fair enough. Okay, well, that was really my only significant question, because I, and I'll have additional comments on, in that area and deliberation.
So, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for your presentation. I still have concern about the overall scale. I still think it's awfully big for the neighborhood. But I understand, was this originally, had you originally designed this as a duplex? Or what was the, can you give me some background there?
Yeah, the initial submittal was for a duplex. But then, the, the owner...
Wanted to use it themselves?
Oh, she, you know, thought that a single-family would be more appropriate for, for their needs on the property, so it's a single-family now.
And was that true with the other residences that are, that they're, the other projects that are in the works right now? The one that we'll be reviewing after this?
So these two were both initially submitted as duplexes. And then, there's an, the other project that we initially submitted, all three of them, I think they were the triplets, is that what we called them? So they were, they were, and we've moved away from the duplexes, and so, they are all single-family residences.
So that'll be several, and, you know, I am, I am gonna go back just for a second to the sea-level rise. Is there, is there a reason why the owners wouldn't comport to the newer standards coming out in two years?
Well, I think they're open to it. We don't know what those stand, like, it's kind of hard to find out what it is. I guess, one of the questions is, we constantly get pushed back that the buildings are too high, and they have, one of them does have a nine-foot plate height, but in, and the other one has, I think it's a nine and an eight, and, you know, but if you want us to go this way, but can't, won't allow us to go this way, then it's hard to fit a house into that little box, if that makes any sense.
Well, it's, it's an awfully large house compared to what's there right now. And it seems like, you know, we're pretty sure that these homes are gonna be in hazardous zone. And we already know that, we're waiting for sort of the processes and the paperwork to catch up. So I'm just kind of putting it out there, it might be a good idea to spend that little bit of extra money to save a lot in the future, whether you still own the property or not, or if you're looking at, you know, having these as rentals, or whatever you're gonna do in the future.
Yeah, or someone else will own it by that time, but they're not gonna wanna be underwater, so...
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. So I just wanted to put that out there now.
Yeah.
The other thing, and this is, has less to do with the design and, and the massing and, but, in terms of construction, and sort of planning for construction... If you've got three of these houses going into that area, how, what, will you be looking at a construction plan to stage those out? Or how is that actually gonna work? I know there's standard language in conditions that the city has provided us, but I'm just wondering if you've thought that out, to have, it's a small street, you know, the other thing is, there's, there's not a lot of sidewalks. I know that that's also eventually going to be an issue with like, some of the other ones. But specific to this project, it's kind of hard for me to break up in my mind the fact that there will be construction impacts to that small street, if there's three of these going on.
For sure, for sure. That's a very good question. And, you know, I hope I'll be alive then, because the owner told me literally he was going to murder me if I don't get it permitted soon, so I don't know if I'll be alive. But no, one thing that's nice about having multiple properties in the area, or for construction, is that we can, they're right next to each other. So we can utilize the adjacent space for construction and staging of that individual home. I don't have like a plan or schedule for you of when the construction will go. They came in as triplets, but certain things slowed one down or sped one up, so I don't know if they're all gonna be permitted at the same time. And then, it is a good point, because, you know, we also will be battling the city's 31-unit hotel with the pool on the roof, and their construction people, and then their 100-car parking lot that they'll be doing construction on, so I'm sure we can piggyback on their plans.
Thank you.
I don't have anything. I apologize, but I need to take a break, just two minutes, and I'll be right back.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I apologize for that, but, now, we're ready to open it up for any comments from the public? Go ahead.
I'm Annie Sly, I live in Karp. It, it really saddens me that the Beach community is being mansionized. We just can go up and down the stage, we can see all the construction, and all these, you know, really big homes are being built. This house has five bedrooms and five bathrooms. That tells me that it's probably going to end up being a vacation rental. And so, the Beach community is going to be no longer residential, it's going to be all vacation rentals in the next few years. That also saddens me very much. 1,200-square-foot home is being replaced by something three times as big. If I'm right about the design guidelines, it says that the second story is supposed to be set back. This one is not. It also says that garage doors are not supposed to be on the front of the house. So it doesn't comply, to the best of my knowledge, with design guidelines. I think if you approve a 3,300-square-foot house, then you're setting a precedent for somebody to come and say, oh, well, mine is 38,000, 3,800, mine is 4,000. It's only a few hundred square foot more. And so, when, when does this end? We just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we talk about small beach-town charm. How can you look at a house like that and say, that is carpentaria, small beach-town charm? I can't. That's a mansion, and our town is being mansionized, and I think it's heartbreaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll bring it back to the commission. Yeah? Okay, great.
We have an Eileen that would like to speak. I'm going to unmute your microphone now and allow you to speak. Once you unmute your mic, we should be able to hear you.
Apologies, sorry. You can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. This morning, I sent a public comment email your way in connection with these agenda items, three and four, the Kohler residences. Presently, I live on Third, right around Linden. I am next door to a Kohler property, that is Playa Lodging, which is on Linden at Third. And that was roughly 13 years ago. That was eight workforce units. It is now a five-unit vacation rental. It's a nice property. When I saw that these, the Stein properties had been sold, I looked up the addresses, I see that all four of these parcels, the, the Kohlers have applied for STR licenses, for all four. That's essentially going to create a resort compound that's gonna wrap around that corner of Third Endurance. And, I've been in the neighborhood for 20 years now, and I've seen more STRs appear in the last, certainly in the last 10-plus years, and it's really eroded the character of the, the neighborhood. And there are now, I think, 218 STRs per, permits, permitted inside the, the Beach neighborhood. I don't think that includes those that are illegal, and I'm, you know, I can't be certain, but my impression is that there are a few illegal STRs in that neighborhood. And it's, it's, it's completely eroded the character of the neighborhood. And I would ask that the Kohlers not turn these four parcels into vacation rentals. Annie Sly made a great point, five-bedroom, five, five-bath, that stinks of vacation rental. That's not a, that's not a single-family home. That's a, that's a property ripe for vacation rental. And that two, two-car garage, that's not going to accommodate the maximum occupancy that's gonna pile into that STR. You know, I'm sure, sure that overflow parking needs will find their way into the new parking lot four, that's going to be part of the Surfliner project, or, or the Spot parking lot, or, you know, a street parking, which is growing more and more difficult in the Beach neighborhood. So, I would, I would ask that the Kohlers not pursue STR licenses for these projects. And clearly, that, that is their intent. It will be a resort compound. And as it is, the Beach neighborhood is just turning into one large Beach community. I think, I think it, it will rival the Miramar in Montecito very shortly. And it's sad. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to Commissioners for deliberation. And who would like to start? You wanna start?
Sure. I'm, I'm troubled that we're considering, in front of us, one project, but in reality, I know the ARB has been working with the applicant on several projects, and continuing to go back to the size and the massing and the compatibility with that neighborhood. So I continue to be troubled by this. I know we're being asked to review this and make a decision based on this particular residence, this particular lot, this particular project, but I think as planning commissioners, we really need to back up and see what's happening here. I think we've heard from several people, and we've seen it, there is a preponderance of the, the small beach-town community in the downtown Beach area is, these are, these homes are getting bigger. The quaint little cottage style isn't there any longer. And so, in many ways, you know, I found this a particularly difficult item to review, because I do look at it in the larger context. And I'm wondering, I do not know, since I'm relatively new to this role, if there is a way to have some sort of a, a continuance in which we look at the weather, and we, in which we actually look at the design element, how these individual projects are affecting that. Just open for comments on this.
Any other issues?
That's my major, just kind of trying to figure that out, if there is anything.
Well, let me, I guess, let me just make a couple comments. I don't, I'm not sure I... I don't, I'm not sure I can, I'm not sure I fully understand the path that you might be suggesting. And that's fine. I think the, you know, there is, there is a neighborhood compatibility standard by which all these similar projects are judged. You've seen the analysis in the staff report for this particular project. Neighborhood compatibility is subjective in, in many ways. We rely heavily on the advice that we get from the ARB in terms of some of those criteria, mass, bulk, scale, architectural, style and design, and all the finessing that goes into making a, you know, a, a home not look like a box, but look like something that, when you look at it, is nice. So, so all of those pieces, and these are just my thoughts. So I'm, you know, this is not, I'm not creating anything here that's, that's profound. The, and I, I'm, I understand your struggle, being new to the commission and, you know, bringing new, new ideas, new thoughts, new guidance for the development of the city to, you know, to us. And I support it, I appreciate it. It's good to have that different perspective. And there are, you know, there are many people in the community who, who bemoan the loss of the little cottages and the construction of larger homes. The, however, that's, in some ways, that's the reality of what we're seeing in terms of the property owners and what they want with their developments. One of the things that, you know, some of the things that I look at, and, you know, I'll get to the point, I guess, here pretty quick on this project, is that, you know, this, and I'll, I'll speak to the, to the short-term rental issue, I guess, in a moment. But the, you know, we, for, for many years now, we've, we've encouraged and had a preference for single-family developments in this area. And I, for the most part, that's what we've seen go in there as opposed to new apartment buildings. And, you know, this is, these are PRD zoning in, in the area. There are apartments in the area. And so we've, we've looked at single-family developments as a, as a community benefit in the beach area to kind of help keep the neighborhood, at least this part of it, in single-family. The, and, you know, whether you believe this property will ultimately be a short-term rental, it may be. You know, fortunately, our council was wise enough to take action to limit the number of short-term rentals that are allowed in the city. And, you know, we've heard through public comment that these parcels are on a waiting list. I don't know, I didn't attempt to verify that myself. And that isn't necessarily all that relevant. But the, the, you know, the, so, but the facts about this project that I think are important along the lines of, I'm sure, what you're struggling with, is that it is a single-family development. Yes, it's a lot of square footage. The upstairs, you know, has, you know, it's a one-to-one bedroom-bathroom ratio. I get it. The, this is a larger lot than many of the single, the lots that we see in this particular area. So, and you can tell by the developable footprint analysis that even though it's a big structure, it's still well, well under the allowable footprint development for this size of a lot. Many of the other larger homes that we've seen have really pushed right up against that envelope. And it's because the lot size is not as big. This is, this is in an area where, you know, you could probably develop a multi-unit apartment building if, if the owner chose to. So that, so the lot, at least in theory, supports a larger development on it. I think the, the, you know, the fact that there are a lot of small cottages still in the area does always drive us to asking the question, "Well, is this big home, is it really compatible with that"? And I think, from my perspective, we have to look at it from the longer-term trend, which is, has been a replacement of many of the small cottage homes with larger homes. That's, this is expensive property and, and, I mean, that, that's the trend we're seeing. And I think the other really important piece here that I want to come back to as well. I mean, to get to your concern about, gee, isn't this just too big for the neighborhood? Or, you know, shouldn't we do a more thorough analysis of the policies in, in the area? And I don't know, I, I can't answer that question for you. I can answer it for myself. The, what, what I look for on this project is that in terms of compatibility and fitting within the neighborhood, this is one of the few neighborhoods where we actually have, do have specific design guidelines that were developed for exactly this purpose, to give us something to go by as, as this area grows and develops. And so I think, I think it's important that we try to utilize those guidelines in addition to our, you know, our, our broader policies, general plan policies, which are also relevant here. But the design guidelines are specific for this neighborhood. And you'll see in the, in the staff's review that this project does, does pretty much comply with the design guidelines. It's, and for me, that helps to answer that question of, "Is it truly compatible in this neighborhood"? We spent a lot of time on the design guidelines, had input from the community. And if we're, if we're building structures in the area that don't meet those design guidelines, then I think that's a potential concern. In this case, for the most part, this project does. I, I think the, I think the second story, well, it's clear that the second story does not meet the design guideline number four in its square footage. It's, it's, and as the applicant's representative cleverly pointed out, there's, you know, there's more than one way to, to fix that, right? We can go bigger, bigger on the ground floor. And then all of a sudden, it, it fits. And which would not be my preference, by the way. I realize that's a, an accurate statement. But I, I am, and I know I'm kind of rambling here, but size, bulk, scale, mass, compatibility, architectural, it all, it all kind of comes together, right? And so we've got this large square footage, single-family home. It's got a fairly large second story on it. And the, the bigger that second story is, the more boxy the structure appears. I mean, you can fix that by lots of articulation, which this development has. And, you know, if you look at the roof layout, it's, wow. I mean, that's a, that's a lot of, that's a lot of, a lot of work. But I still think it's important that we, you know, if, if we're looking for something that helps us be comfortable, that we're not just letting development go and have these huge mansions being built, let's apply the design guidelines. That's what they're there for. They're there specifically to make sure that the house is there, fit on the lot. They're not these giant boxes. The second stories are set back in a way that is attractive as well as meets the maximum square footage requirements. And so I don't know if I've helped you with, with your concern or not, but these are my comments on the project. I like the project. I understand that property owners want to develop these projects in, with something that they want, that, that they can afford some, whether it's for their family or to sell. I mean, it's, we can speculate on what the future might be, but, but who knows? So for me, it's a single-family residence as opposed to a multi-unit development. That's my preference. And it's very well articulated. The, the architecture is nice, nicely done. I'm not concerned about the setback. I, we've dealt with setback issues on, in this area, on Dorance in particular. The, you know, it is an arrow road. I do have a comment on the, the next project. Not on setbacks specifically, but related. But, so I'm not concerned about that. The placement on the lot is, is fine. I, I think the, the second story is, needs to meet the forty percent. And I, I would, I would ask that that be done by additional step back on the second story rather than adding more square, square footage on the first floor. But, and I guess the, the last point I'll make is that replacement of aging homes and structures over time with, with new, very nicely done, very expensive development, in my opinion, is a benefit to the community. I understand it's not little beach cottages. I, I, you know, but that's what I look at. And so this project replaces a very old structure with a very nice, single-family home. Yes, it's big, but bulk, scale and mass for where it's located, I think, is, is fine. Setback is fine. And I just, I think we need to, I think we need to stick with the guidelines and make sure that we can hold those, you know, fit within that. And I'm gonna stop there. I'm rambling. Thank you.
Well, part of the, part of what's going on is economic. You can't, I mean, the dirt costs so much money that, to do anything, like, you couldn't do a little cottage here economically. It just wouldn't work. And that, there's a, I'd say that this is a medium-sized house for the beach neighborhood. It's not that big compared to ones on that street. I don't, so, and then this constitutes rejuvenated housing stock. And, I mean, it's gotta be, have some economic value to it. Otherwise, it's not gonna get done, period. And then, I mean, those, those two houses were built around 1910. I don't know why, it's amazing they're still standing. You know, especially a wet fog area, wood just sitting there and rotten. It's pretty amazing. I, you know, I live in a small cottage. I love it. You know, I, I would rather live in a small cottage any day. And a lot of people are like that. But it's just not a economic reality. It's not happening. It's like, you've just gotta bone up to the, to the day. And that's, this is the day we're living in. My daughter's bought a house here and she's gonna rent it out. They're gonna rent it out for eight thousand dollars a month. So, you know, that's, that's the reality. And, you know, it's not just housing, it's everything. Everything is more expensive. Building materials, it's, you know, and it hasn't even gone up as much as it's gonna. And this is an opportunity to rebuild part of Carp. You don't know what's gonna happen in a year or ten years or twenty years or what's gonna happen with the economy. These could, the economy could take a dump and all the vacation rentals disappear. And all of those would be, would be either home-owned or rented. So the, the objective and my, what I think is the priority is to see carpentry rebuilt and so that it's in good shape. And I don't have a problem with a big house. That's, you know, that's what's happening. They're big everywhere. And we had, we had a big issue with a house on Vallesito. It was a double lot, you know? And, you know, the homeowner, he just had a, he had a built-in right to get what he wanted. But he, you know, there was a huge backlash. I think it's just something that's gonna keep on going. But you can't, the land's not gonna get cheaper. It's never gonna get cheaper. You're never gonna pay less rent. Your, your food's never gonna go down. It's always going up. The only, the only alternative is that, is you gotta protect your wage. You gotta protect what you're making. Otherwise, you're buried. And that's happening to a lot of people here. So I, I support the project. I mean, I'm willing to debate Glenn's thing about the forty percent, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't let that stop me either. I, I would approve this project. I think, you know, they've bent over backwards with the ARB. You accommodate them everything they ask for. You accommodate them. And that's really the visual part of it. It's, we're just mainly land use and zoning and that kind of thing. So I kind of lean on them to do their job. So, and I, I think they have. So I, I can support the project the way it is. I think you did a beautiful job. It's very well articulated. There would be a, an visual addition to the property, which is PR, BD, what, PRD twenty? So, I mean, you can max it out if you want it. So, and the modification, we do that all the time. It's just a standard mod. I wouldn't make a big deal. It's just gonna line up with the street. Everything's good. So that's where I'm at. You know, I can go debate further about the small beach town charm, but it's just a done deal.
Let me just make one more comment, something I didn't talk about that you raised. And that's, you know, sea level rise adaptation. We've seen raised We've seen raised elevations. We've, we've seen, or we've seen raised floor development. We've seen raised pad development. This one is, you know, sort of a raised pad. It's just not raised very much. And I'm okay with that. I, it's, I, I, I am not in favor of trying to hold people accountable to a potential future standard or code or policy. We do see it, we do see the sea level rise adaptation strategy policies. You know, I mean, it's a, it's a very valid point. And there are many people who will argue just the opposite of what I'm going to argue. But I, I, I would hate to attempt to require developers to meet a standard that does not yet exist for this area. And I know that perhaps, you know, puts them either ahead or behind the eight ball, depending on how you're looking at it. But I think, you know, this area, we're talking about five foot of sea level rise before there's an impact, based on the current adaptation analyses. And I think, anyway, that, you mentioned it. Like I say, there's many people who will debate that we should be doing more to protect development and the city from future liability or whatever for sea level rise. You know, I think there's, in the, in our temporary policy, there's some, some language that's in the, the conditions that addresses some of that. But still, I, I, the, the benefit that we get, and the applicant is correct, we always try to squeeze on height, total height. And, you know, if you, this helps us keep the total height down in this particular situation. I think it's appropriate.
One, one thing about the, the, I would almost rather see a little higher building and have a raised foundation, especially in the beach neighborhood. Because the issue is, a raised foundation makes the house really easy to move and economic to move. But a slab on grade's really rough. I mean, you got to, you got to put those beams right through the wall. And then you've got to sister everything up to try to get it so you can move it. It's a mess. So I, you know, that would be, as far as preparing for seawater rise, I think that would be the most beneficial thing you could do, was try to encourage raised foundations in the beach neighborhood. A lot of them are raised, so, but a lot of them are graded up. So that's always a problem. So, and, so where are we at?
Do you want to debate the 40%? Um, yes, I would. I guess I, I would want to, I don't know if there's any additional discussion. I mean, we're getting pretty close to wanting to wrap this up. So, you know, I would certainly want to give Commissioner Van Antwerp an opportunity to have any additional deliberation or discussion on this particular project. I think, you know, the consensus so far, if I could just summarize, is, you know, is that, you know, we're, we're supportive of this project. I still want to talk about the second story, but, and it didn't sound like you were. So I want to give you a chance now, before there's a motion, to say your piece.
I agree with your assessment of the second story. I, I understand your concerns as well about where we're at with sea level rise. But the other, I'm just going to go ahead and throw it out there. I continue to be concerned about land use policy three. And that's preserving the small-town beach character. I, I don't believe that, I think this does introduce incompatibility with the existing scale in the area. But again, that's subjective. And I know that you mentioned that, some of these are very subjective. I think land use policy 31, the density and scale, I think are incompatible with the existing development pattern in the area. From what I could see, this represents about, it's a large increase over the existing structure. We already went through, I think, a couple of the other design elements. In, in regards to the actual beach neighborhood design guidelines, I, I don't believe that it reflects the small beach town charm due to its excessive size relative to the neighborhood context. Realizing those are subjective.
Okay, so, so through the chair, if I could, you know, really, for, I support the project. I think it's a great project, very nicely done. It is big, but I understand. I, I, but I would, I would like to, and I guess I'd further explain my rationale. I, the applicants have done a lot to make the project presentable and nice. And articulation is significant. I, I agree with all that. I'm just hesitant to approve a project that doesn't meet that second-story square footage guideline. I realize it's a guideline and it's, you know, you've gone above and beyond the, with articulation. So I, I get it. And we could, I agree with staff report that it, in concept, it, you know, as a whole, it meets that guideline. But I, for, for this development and future developments in the area that we're going to see, many of those don't, don't have the benefit of the larger lot here. So we're seeing people really push those limits. And, you know, we, we start creeping up from the 40%. I just, you know, that's the reason why I'd like to see that, to try to hold firm on that guideline so that we could, I think that'll help us guide development, further development in the neighborhood. I think we've been pretty consistent about how we've applied it previously. And so I guess I would ask the applicant if they'd be willing at least to, to agree that they would make an adjustment such that the development would be in, in compliance with that 40% maximum square footage second story. Would that be, could I ask the applicant that?
Yeah, ask them.
Can I respond?
Listen, we're here to work as a team, okay? To do what's right for CARP. I'm trying to wrap my head around this. Previously, you had mentioned that there's a 40% guideline. We're at 46%. So we're slightly over. I would be happy to reduce this second floor by 6% or to keep it? Because what's the, how would you like to word it? Because I'm, I'm struggling on the, you're looking for like a 6% reduction in the second floor. That's, we're more than happy to acquiesce to that request.
6% of the first floor. Thank you. I think we can work that into our, you know, into the language of the approval here in some way so that if you're willing to do it, it's, it'll be in the minutes, so.
That's good with me.
And if I could, I, you know, I've said a lot. I want to, I haven't really paid much attention to staff over there. So I just want to make sure that you're, where we're at with this, this, this would be the only change to the project as proposed. Is that doable tonight?
Through the chair, yeah, depending on how you word your condition, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. The second story right now is 46% of the overall total of the residents. So you, just to understand, because the 6% kind of threw me off when you're talking about the total, are you wanting them to reduce the size of the second floor so that it is down to 40% of the size of the overall residents? Is that what you want? Or are you saying just make it work with that design guideline?
I want to, I, I would like the second story to meet design guideline four, which states that the second story shall comprise not more than 40% of the total building square footage. To do that, you increase the square footage on the first floor, or you, which I'm not suggesting, I'd rather you not do that. I would rather you reduce the second floor square footage such that it meets that 40% threshold. I don't know how much of a reduction that is. I didn't do the math, but it's not a lot.
So, that's where I came up with that we, we would be happy to reduce the second floor by 6% of the square footage of the, of the ground floor, whatever that is. If it's, if it's going from 40%, 46% to 40, that's fine. When I look at this, if we were to agree to make the second floor 40% of the ground floor, you would be removing half of the second floor, which is not, and I'm just throwing some numbers out there and just trying to look at it.
I may have misstated if I did. I apologize.
You know, so to make a minor square footage reduction, that's not a problem. But to remove half the second floor?
No, I'm not, I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for 40% of the total square footage.
You guys doing some quick math?
Yes.
Through the chair, we've been trying to do some quick math over here and, and right, just looking at the current existing square footage of the, the total, right? Which, including the garage, right now is 3749. So if we were trying to shrink the second floor based off of that square footage, it would need to come down about 225 square feet, the second floor.
To, to meet the 40%.
Now, what gets tricky here, right, is as you shrink the overall square footage, that overall number also changes. So this becomes kind of a sliding scale. That makes it a little bit harder to kind of conceptualize what the change ends up being here. But I think, right, if, the, the direction, what the, what Commissioner LeFevere is asking for is a 40, is to scale back the second floor such that the square footage of the second floor comprises no more than 40% of the total building square footage. So not 40% of the ground floor, but 40% of whatever your overall square footage is, is, is on the second floor.
Okay.
So like I said, 40, 60 split essentially.
Gotcha.
And further, Commissioner LeFevere is asking that you don't solve that by adding further bulk to the ground floor.
Yeah, so just so we're kind of clear, because that was a little confusing initially. So what you're asking is essentially to remove a, a room on the second floor, if that's what you were intending, you know?
And if that, yeah, that, if, yes, my intent is to make sure we stay within that design guideline. Because I think it's, that's one of the significant design guidelines that I'd like to make sure we're holding to. So if that results, if the way to accomplish that is by removing one of the bedrooms, then yes, that, that would be my request.
Okay.
That's going to change a lot of the design on the top floor, I'd imagine. So is that meaning going back to ARB and saying, hey, this is what we've come up with now?
I think the, my, my reading would be that, you know, we're going to, we're going to agree on the concept here. And then, you know, this project goes back to ARB regardless. And, but I, I would leave it to staff to, I mean, it's just like any other criteria. So I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. I,
Yeah. Okay, well, now that we've figured out the numbers, I think we would be happy, I wonder if you would, if we could make a suggestion to the deal, if that's what we're doing here. We would be happy to comply with that guideline and reduce the second floor. Do you like that deal?
Yes, reduce the second floor such that it meets the design guideline four.
Yeah.
But there's no addition downstairs.
I didn't say that in this one. What?
You're ultimately going to change the exterior of the building.
Be cracked.
So you got to go back to ARB.
Yeah, so, right, there's, there's a couple ways this can, can be done. Right, kind of the, the more conservative belt and suspenders type option would be that you send it back, you continue it tonight. You send it back to the ARB for revised preliminary. Then it comes back to you after the ARB's blessed it for your approval, right? That's kind of the, the more time-consuming, you know, safe approach. The other way, if you feel that the applicant is making a good faith effort, is, you know, you could approve the project with that condition placed on it. And then I think we would also then want to condition the project that it return to the ARB for sort of a in-progress to show what this revised design looks like before they come back to the ARB with final working drawings. Right, just so that we kind of make sure we got the architecture nailed down before he goes, you know, all in on engineering for a design that hasn't yet been vetted by the ARB.
That's, that's like a six-month process right there, probably. I mean, this has been,
My intent would be to take the shortest possible route. You know, it's not my intent to, I certainly don't want a redesign to ARB and then back to us for final approval. I, I don't believe that's necessary. I think the architecture here is, is well-established. You're, it's going to result in a second floor that's similarly articulated, but stepped back further in one, either on the back or the front. And I, you know, whether ARB, whether there's an ARB step along the way, I mean, I, I, I would have to rely on staff to make sure that the process is, is, at least covers the bases. But my intent would simply be to agree on, on the condition. And I realize the structure looks different. And I know that's taking a bit of a leap here. But I'm sensitive to the sense of urgency that, you know, you would have on the project. I'd like to respect that.
Yep. If I could just suggest one more thing, just to see, because I think we're all in effort. It's close. It would be nice if it was a little bit smaller. I think I could comply with that guideline, reduce the second story structure so it complies with it. My intent would not be to just make the ground floor larger. But if you didn't take a minor option of that away from me, I could push and pull a little bit and balance it and make sure that what's there is there, as opposed to just saying you have to remove 250 square feet of a building that seems like it fits the size, bulk and scale, but it doesn't meet this exact guideline. So if I had all my tools available, I would say we can comply with that guideline. Let's do it. do it. Um, if you, and, and I wouldn't do it by just increasing, I would decrease the second floor, but if I can play with a little push and pull, that would be nice, too.
I'm not, I, I understand what you're saying, I'm not sure that that, um, changes the process, in fact, that further complicates the process probably, but, um, in, in terms of the timing, that's needed to do it.
I guess for the clarity of it, if you could, if the, if the comment could be, make the second floor comply with the guideline is your condition, and not saying you cannot touch the ground floor. If you're a hard line on not touching the ground floor, then that's your choice, too, but that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I would be okay with that, although, I mean, I'm not the only voice here, but I realize I raised the issue. I, the challenge I have with that is it just adds more complexity to, to what we're trying to accomplish, and I, but I'm not trying to mess up your project, I just, there's, there's a reason why I want.
It to comply.
It to comply, and, um, you know, had you come in with a slightly larger ground floor to begin with and it complied, then I wouldn't be raising the issue, but, um, again, I, uh, if you're going to balance it, um, it sounds like either way it's going to go to ARB, so, um, the, I, I would agree with that, I think the bulk of the, you know, the, I don't want to play games over it, so, you know, it's the bulk of the reduction should be on the second story, and, and if a little bit of change on the first floor is, is needed to make that fit, I'm okay with that, that's, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner LeFevere, if I can just add in here, and Cindy, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but the ground floor is already at the setbacks on the side, so there's, there's no, there's no push or pull to be gained on the side setbacks on the ground floor. Um, you know, the, the front setback, right, the, the porch is already in the setback, I don't know if you want to offer or give any wiggle room there, or if you want to hold the line on where the, the front setback encroachment already is, in which case then the only ground floor, you know, push and pull that really is potentially up for grabs is the rear.
We don't, we don't need any front relief, we could use the back and just comply with everything, we don't need any more of that. And can I ask you a question, Nick? Is there, is there any reason, if you so felt that it would, you guys would approve it, would we not just go to ARB for final with this? And if they, if they didn't like my changes, they could not approve it for final?
So the problem with that approach is that final review is really supposed to be, you know, kind of, kind of more of a, I don't want to say ministerial, but sort of an administrative process, where they're not really empowered to be making wholesale design changes at that time, right? You're supposed to come in with a nearly complete set of working drawings at, at that stage, and so, you know, my preference, right, would be if the, if the planning commission wants to go in this direction tonight and keep you moving along, is, is you update your preliminary drawings to show how you would resolve that, we run that through the ARB once, and if we get their, their blessing, then you move forward with your final drawings to come back to them.
Yeah, that's fine, too. I just think what we discussed, the building is not going to change. I will reduce it, I'll comply it, but it's not going to look very much different than, than what it looks like now.
Let me, um, let me, Nick, if I could ask you a question, because I, I know, and I, I appreciate the concern of getting wrapped up in a whole nother round here. Um, perhaps a more, a quicker option would simply be to, um, continue this hearing and have it come back in September with the revisions, and we would finalize it then, without additional ARB input.
That's, um, barring, barring Cindy's schedule, um, that conceptually, I guess, could be possible.
We would be happy with handling it ARB also, not that, I don't know if I'm allowed to chime in on any of this stuff.
Six months, I'm just concerned it's been a long process.
Well, that would be the, that would be the, that's the recommended approach from staff, so I, I would defer, you know, to staff, I think it would, it should go pretty quickly either way, um, hopefully. I was just looking to try to. And I, you know, I, I hate to.
Basically, you're basically redesigning the second floor, you have to start pretty much from scratch. You can't just delineate, well, this bedroom, we'll take this bedroom out, that won't work. I mean, to have a consistently looked, looking structure once you're done, uh, you know, just from an architect's standpoint, it, you gotta redesign the whole second floor.
That's my, that's, that's my request, so I, I know we've talked about it a lot, I, you know, and I, I, you know, I'm here shortly, I'm going to make a motion for, that we approve the project with that stipulation, and, um, as soon as we get clarity on how we tend to implement that, um, because I, I, I think it's important.
Yeah.
All right, let's do it.
Yep, if, so I like your idea, and we would, one of my thoughts is, could we reduce it to comply with the forty percent guideline? Um, that's the comment, and then we would just handle it with ARB moving forward. If, if you guys feel we need to come back here, and that's the better way to do it, then that's fine, that would be our preference, and I think would work out well.
We're not going to reduce the forty.
Yeah, I.
Comply with the forty percent.
As director, I'd prefer that we, we handle the change with the ARB. I think that gives us a little bit more flexibility, because they meet twice a month. Um, you know, otherwise, the noticing and turnaround for us to get something ready for planning commission, we have like a week and change or something before, we got to be committed to it, it's just, it's too ambitious for the September planning commission. I think it's, I think it's better to, you know, provide your direction as part of your motion, we can add it as a condition, and then we work, resolve it with the ARB and keep moving the project forward.
Yeah, I appreciate sticking with that design guideline. Um, I think it's up to the timing of it, it's up to Cindy and Nick.
Okay, I'm gonna, if, if you're okay, I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I move that we, um, adopt resolution PC twenty-five zero-zero-six, approving, which therefore approving the development plan and coastal development permit for this project, uh, two-three-two-two-three-four, and, um, for the construction of new single-family residents with an attached garage at forty-nine thirty-four Dorance, uh, with one modification, and that is that the, uh, applicant, um, modify the building such that the second floor meets design guideline floor, design guideline for, uh, criteria of no more than forty percent of the total square footage, uh, the bulk of that to be taken on the second story. And that's the, I think that's the only change to the conditions.
Second.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were waiting for me. Are you on a roll call vote again? Okay, Commissioner LeFevere.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Antwerp.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Moore.
Yes.
Motion carries three-zero.
So now we'll go on to item number three, the other call in the residence. And do we have a staff report?
We do, now we're going, uh, back to item number three on the agenda and in your packet. Um, this one is very similar, almost same song, second verse, as the one you just reviewed, so I will, in interest of time, go through this presentation a little more quickly, but I will highlight the differences between the two. I thought it was me. Um, this one is a forty-nine forty-nine Dorance Way, this is on the south side of Dorance, uh, basically kind of across the street from the project we just looked at. And this one, most notably, is Spanish Mediterranean-style architecture, rather than the, the Craftsman Cottage style of the other home. So the project description for this one is for a development plan and coastal development permit to demolish an existing one-thousand-and-sixty-square-foot single-family residence and garage, and construct a new three-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-three-square-foot two-story single-family residence. And the residence, the living space would be comprised of three-thousand-fifty-six square feet, a two-car garage, with the size of three-hundred-and-seventy-seven square feet, and then the maximum height on this one would be a little lower at twenty-four feet one inch. Um, again, new landscaping hardscape, a new driveway off of Dorance Way, and this one also requires a modification to the front yard setback. And here's the vicinity map, and here's the site, here's the one you just looked at, and the existing residence here. And here's the site plan for this one, so Dorance is over here on the right-hand side in this diagram. Uh, the twenty feet back from the property line is shown here with the dash line, and then the thirty feet from the center line, which again, on, is the more restrictive case, uh, is here. So, um, for this proposal, uh, the modification would encompass more square footage than just that small little pop-out, um, of habitable space on the, on the last one. And I'll get into what that space entails in a minute. So here's the floor plan, uh, the orange is the space that is within the, uh, front yard setback, so, um, the enclosed little porch alcove, uh, is almost entirely within that, uh, setback area, a portion of one of the bathrooms, and then, um, the front portion of the garage on the lower floor is what is included in that square footage. On the second floor, it is a strip of the, one of the bedrooms here, and then, um, a portion of the balcony that, uh, is over the garage. And that's an unenclosed balcony, so it doesn't count towards square footage, but this porch does, because it's enclosed. And so here's the north elevation, here's that entry alcove, you can see, um, and then the garage doors here, um, the overall height, as I mentioned before, twenty-four feet one, and the plate heights on this one, um, the first floor has nine-foot plate heights, and the second floor has eight-foot plate heights. Here's the west elevation, so this would be the side, uh, facing, um, uh, towards the marsh. And then here's the east elevation, and the last time this project was at the ARB, uh, one of their comments was to add further, um, articulation and wedding cake, uh, designed to the second floor, and so, um, the architect did do that in this one, and, um, and you can see here, you've got this, and you've got the little pop-out here, and it goes back again, and then you've got the chimney that pops out, it didn't pop out before, and then back in again here. And then, uh, the east elevation, again, same thing, this would be the side facing, uh, Linden, the stairwell window, the stairwell, you know, has a little kind of tower element that pops out, but then you've got the relief back here, and then more relief coming in here. And then the south elevation, uh, again, there's this little portion that, uh, pops out and the, the rest of the footprint's back there, and then the, the, um, sliding windows for the living room to come out into the backyard, and this is the south elevation. And here's the section, again, this one is also slab-on-grade, um, same situation as the last project, where it's in the area that is not subject to the requirements of the interim sea level rise guidelines, so they are not required to raise the finished floor, it's, um, optional at this point here, in this location. And then here's the, uh, section going east-west, again, you can see these, uh, the two, uh, nine-foot plates on the bottom, and then just regular eight-foot plates on the top. And the roof plan, um, you can see that, um, the open cables and the different hips that has been more articulated, and as a result of the additional articulation, it actually brought the height down six additional inches from, uh, when it was at ARB last. And then the landscape hardscape plan, again, uh, same comment, um, from the ARB meeting, uh, for the plant pallet to, uh, for the different residences to have, uh, you know, different pallets for each one, so this one has not, uh, the plants have not been updated yet, they will be updated to prior to final ARB, or maybe in-progress ARB, um, but this is the, um, uh, the plant pallet here, so that, but the, the gist of the landscaping of the, uh, fence at the front, with the, you know, additional planting shrubs and grasses in front should be a buffer, there's the decomposed granite section here, which can help with, uh, off-street, or, excuse me, on-street public parking, um, and then the fruit trees in the backyard, and then this is permeable papers. And then here's the story pole photos, again, these photo, story pole photos were installed, um, in February twenty-twenty-four as well, um, for the prior duplex proposal, when that went to, uh, ARB in February twenty-twenty-four. Um, but here you go, um, from Dorance, um, looking south at the residence, the story poles, and then here's kind of looking like southeast more. Uh, this is further down Dorance, looking back up towards Linden, you can see the story poles here, um, and then almost here's down at the corner by the apartment building, looking back. Then here's up at Linden, at the corner by the spot, looking, and then this is over on Third Street, uh, looking north, back at the site. And then, uh, here's the, the setback modification again, um, you know, the twenty feet from the property line is the dash line, the fifty feet from center line is the, is the solid line, and then that yellow area is, is the portion that would be encroaching into the front yard setback, uh, currently required front yard setback, the thirty feet from the center line. Um, this is a little study that Dylan included in the plans for these, um, showing the, uh, setbacks for the various houses along the street, and, um, basically showing that the twenty feet back from the front property line is, um, consistent with the two houses on, or three of the houses just in the immediate vicinity. And for the findings, um, to approve the modification, uh, your commission would need to, like I said before, um, one of these three findings, um, and then, um, the third finding for the provision of a larger amount of open space or landscaping than the minimum required, requirements of the district, uh, is the finding that, um, staff feels would be the one that you could use if you were to go forward, to approve the modification, and that is because this proposal includes forty-four percent of the lot area as open space and landscaping, which is more than double of the, um, required twenty percent. And then the key objectives and policies, same as the last project, um, just the main ones, um, preserve the small beach town character, um, objective CD one, the size, scale, and form of buildings on a parcel should be compatible with adjacent nearby properties, and then the, the mix of architectural designs based on historic regional types. And the action options, staff's recommendation is number one, to adopt resolution number PC twenty-five zero-zero-five and approve the project. And then before you start your discussion, I don't know if you looked at the staff report, but, um, for that DG, number four, design guideline number four, that was the topic of discussion with the last project, this one is actually at forty-one percent with its second story, so it's just a smidge over.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, and that concludes my presentation.
So this one is in conflict.
So this one is in conflict with the design guideline four?
Through the chair, by 1%.
By 1%.
Just barely, barely.
And is it also in conflict, I saw... I'll come back to that one. Thank you.
Just a, I guess, a real quick question, probably more for the applicant, but perhaps it's come up. I know, and this is just a minor issue, the, so we've got the picket fence with landscape on the street side, and then there's four feet of decomposed granite. And that seems a little slim to be able to park a vehicle off the road if you look at the trend in that neighborhood. Did that come up at all? Is there, is there the ability just to give that a little bit more space on the street side of the fence and landscaping?
The placement of that is based on where the new curbs are that were recently constructed on Dorance. So they use that information in their survey. So the distance between that new curb and the property line is where they get that four-foot strip from. And for whatever reason, on the other side of the street, it's a little bit bigger space. And I mean, the applicant, it'll be their choice. If they want to eat into their property, they provide additional.
Eight feet on the other parcel, but...
That's what I mean. It's not equal on each side.
It would seem to suggest, right, that the paved roadway width on Dorance isn't centered within the right-of-way, that it's, you know, favored towards the south side of the street by a few feet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That does answer my question.
But cars are, cars are directed to park in that strip, right?
Yes. The intention of providing the rolled curb in the DG shoulder is to encourage cars to park as much onto that shoulder as they can and not out in the pavement. And as you go down Dorance, or any of the streets in the Beach neighborhood, you kind of see this patchwork there where some owners have encroached into the right-of-way and, you know, and tried to claim that as their own, and that pushes parked cars farther onto the street, and the next one is set in and leaves a shoulder for cars to park on. So, you know, slowly over time, as this neighborhood redevelops, we're trying to claim back some of that right-of-way and make those shoulders available for parking. But, you know, as noted, the street isn't necessarily centered within the right-of-way. And so in a situation like this, you end up with a wider shoulder on one side of the street than you do on the other.
Yeah, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
I have one for staff. So in the staff report, it's noted that the architectural style of the Spanish Mediterranean, is that what it is? Is not common in the Beach neighborhood. So my question is, I know our general plan talks about dominant neighborhood development pattern, and this isn't common. So how would we reconcile that style?
There are a few Spanish-style, Spanish Mediterranean-style homes in the Beach neighborhood. It's probably Cottage or Craftsman is more dominant. It's probably the third. But it's not that it doesn't exist in the Beach neighborhood. Over on Third, there's two Spanish-style homes, or actually, no, this one just got the metal roof, excuse me. We've got the one right here on Third Street. Further down on Third Street, there is a two-story, it's not in this aerial, but further down, there's one. The Stein house here is Spanish-style, so there's three right in the immediate vicinity.
And to your...
And another one on Dorance.
And to your point, Commissioner Van Antwerp, this came up right from the get-go, the very first time any of these projects went to the ARB as, you know, right, Spanish or Mediterranean styles, not very common in this, in this neighborhood. You know, do we want to further encourage its proliferation, or do we want to try to steer the applicant towards, you know, a more Cottage-y style that's in keeping with what we mostly see? And, you know, to the applicant's, you know, credit, I think they came in initially envisioning kind of creating a little bit of a unique identity for their holdings there on the corner to relate better to the, you know, the former Stein house, the one that's on the corner right there of Dorance and Linden. And the ARB seemed to, you know, indulge that to a degree, and the compromise then was, well, at least change the one across the street behind the spot to something that relates more to the Cottage vernacular. And maybe for these ones, these lots that are immediately adjacent to the Stein house on either side of it, maybe there's a little bit more leeway there to play with a style that relates better to that former Stein house. So that's how we ended up kind of with, you know, this mix of architectures. Anyway, something we flagged right from the get-go, too, but the ARB was willing to give the applicant a little leeway on this, given the setting.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'm thinking through with the other house on Linden and how, I mean, that's pretty dominant architecture, which is why I would have preferred Craftsman or, so thank you.
We're done? Would the applicant like to address this issue?
No, I don't think so. Dave definitely don't want to hear that again. So the, the previous house, the Architectural Review Board had no comments on that house, so I didn't make any changes before bringing it to you. This house, they did have some comments. Cindy did mention it. There was not a before and after, but we did reduce the second floor and create more articulation. You know, as far as all my other comments and stuff, they're the same as the other project. So this property is a little bit smaller than the other one, too.
Back to Commissioner. Does anybody in the audience want to talk about this? No? Okay. Back to the commissioners for deliberation. Would you like to start this time?
I guess I'm coming back to the design standards. I think it's also been noted that there is a conflict with one of the community design elements. And again, it goes into the small beach town image discouraging new development of large, boxy buildings. I would say this still has that. And that ground floor that's very, very much dominated, dominated by the garage right So I have some issues with that. I am concerned about this because when you look down Dorance, you sort of see this, it's very weighted based on when I viewed the story poles and having looked at it. So I have concerns about that whole corner.
If I may, just to speak to the garage item, you know, I recognize what you're talking about. This is something that we struggle with as well. The challenge here on this lot is, given the width of the lot at 50 feet and given the minimum required setbacks, five feet on either side, that leaves you a 40-foot-wide building envelope max. And, you know, a standard garage is about 20 feet wide. So by default, we kind of end up in a situation where roughly half of the ground floor frontage is going to be devoted to a garage. And that's unavoidable in this type of situation unless you have a way to, you know, have a detached garage tucked away in the back and a driveway down the side aisle, you know, to get to it, something like that. And so what we often do in these types of situations then is to try to find ways to, you know, kind of promote or draw attention to the other parts of the structure, bringing the porch forward, setting the garage back, trying to do other things to reduce the, you know, the perceived mass, if you will, of the garage. So in this case, breaking it up with two separate doors rather than one big garage door. You know, there's other kind of tricks like that architecturally that you can do to kind of take your attention away from the garage and draw it towards the other parts of the structures when there's, you know, no real easy fix for hiding a 20-foot-wide garage. Just to, you know, kind of explain a little bit of how we sometimes end up in these situations.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, the only, the only thing is that that's because it's such a large house for that lot.
Again, but the garage is kind of a fixed quantity, right?
I understand.
Twenty by 20. So it's, regardless of the size of the house, it's going to take up that same, you know,
Do you want me to go?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any significant issues with this project. The architectural style, you know, I, you know, if you, if you look at the Stein residence, then, you know, then this met, you know, this fits really nicely in with that style. But the style, you know, is, you know, does have some fairly massive elements. The front archway is, you know, compared to like a Craftsman porch, you know, is just a different look. It's more, it's thick, it's massive. So I, I mean, I understand those comments. In terms of the size of the residence, you know, we've had that discussion. I, I'm, I'm okay with the size. And I, as I indicated in my last way-too-long conversation, the, you know, I really rely heavily on the advice we get from ARB and architecturally especially. And, you know, so this, this has been through that review process. As the applicant noted, there was a number of changes that were made as a result of their comments. I think the architectural style was really, you know, I mean, it is what it is. I'm okay with it as, as presented.
Yeah, I support the project. I think it's really well-done. I don't see a way around the big part because it's just all about economics. We're going to, we're going to continue to see this and hoping for the old days that everybody could live in a little shack. It just isn't going to happen. So I, I can support the project. I'm willing to make a motion to approve it.
I think it's going to completely transform the entire block's character, and it's exactly what our general plan seeks to prevent. I think you're going to have that, that full, you know, down Dorance to the right of, it's a, it'll be, I think it'll be kind of unusual-looking. It'll be an unusual cluster of similar-looking residences going down there. I, I think it's going to change it immensely. I realize it's technically code-compliant. I, I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Do you want to make the motion?
Sure. I was just reviewing the ARB comments again, just to make sure I didn't miss anything, but I think we're there. Give me a moment, please. Okay, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution PC 25-005, thereby approving a development plan and coastal development permit for project 232233 for the construction of a new single-family residence, attached garage located at 4949 Dorance Way. I just want to make sure I'm, yeah.
Commissioner Van Antwerp.
Approve.
Commissioner LaFeverse.
Yes.
Vice Chair Moyer.
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you, you guys. Appreciate all your...
Thanks for your time, and I appreciate it.
Director's report? Take care.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Before we get to the director's report, would you have any matters by commissioners?
Okay, it's your turn.
Okay, director's report. So in your packet this evening, you have the city calendar for the month of August, the planning activity report, and the building permit reports for the month of July. I can't think of too many things here to report out of those off the top of my head. I think you, you know that the, your approval of the Chevron decommissioning project was appealed to the city council. The city council heard that appeal last month on July 15th, and the city council denied the appeal and upheld your approval of that project.
Great.
And so we, we did go ahead and transmit notification of that final action down to the Coastal Commission, and we're waiting to hear back whether any appeals have been filed with the Coastal Commission. So we should, we should know that here, hopefully this week, where we stand. But again, the city council upheld your decision to approve that project on appeal. The other items I wanted to just briefly highlight was the Palms renovation is moving forward. The first phase of that renovation, which is the remodel of the southern half of what used to be the Oaxaca Fresh Restaurant, is in for building permit review right now. And the intention there, as you might recall, is to create a small kind of café market space. And so they're, they're working to get building permits for that and get it under construction there sooner than later and get that up and running and operational while the larger renovation of the, of the Palms building is underway, since that will take some time to get through. some time to get through. And then, sorry, I had one other item and it just escaped to me. Well, maybe we'll just leave it there since I can't think of what the other item was. And then just for, for your next hearing, we do have a couple of items tentatively parked on the September 2nd agenda. And I just want to point out, because of Labor Day, that's going to fall on a Tuesday rather than a Monday. So that's a little bit of a departure from your normal schedule. So the next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 2nd. And I expect we will have a couple items on that agenda at least. So at least one of them would be the, the street vacation request that we were not able to hear tonight, assuming that we have a quorum. And then potentially, we may be ready to bring the related cap project to your commission, which Bob McDonald from the Water District provided you some information about earlier tonight in his presentation to your Just need to know attendance at the next meeting.
I expect to be here, yes.
Great. Thank you. We'll see you all on September 2nd and we're adjourned at 9:19.